Good evening, folks. I'd like to welcome you all to Milton's annual town meeting. My name is Bob Hiss and I'm proud to be your town moderator. So, welcome to our town meeting tonight, as is obvious, since you are all virtually here. We will be conducting town meeting with our more recent standard approach as a virtual town meeting. My approach will be to conduct the introductory portion as we always do with the Pledge of Allegiance, the invocation and reading of the rules. Then I'll read a motion to conduct this meeting as a remote town meeting, as required by the legislation that enables a representative town meeting to do so. The motion codifies some of our rules and I'll explain when finished the reasons and we'll then answer any questions and vote on the motion. If the motion passes, the meeting will continue. If the motion fails, I'll adjourn the meeting and we will convene at some future time and place. So, off we go. In keeping with our tradition, we'll start our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance to the play. So, if you'd please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all. The meeting will now open with an invocation by Father William Pallardi of St. Agath's Parish in Milton. I very much appreciate Father Pallardi taking some time from his busy schedule to join us tonight. Interesting fact, Father Pallardi was a town meeting member himself in the late 70s and early 80s here in Milton. And so, welcome back, sir. Zoom admin, if you'd please unmute Father Pallardi and then we would, if you would turn on your microphone and camera, Father.
Okay.
Are you there, sir?
I am here.
We can hear you.
Okay, it says that the host disabled the camera, but...
Can we turn the camera on for Father? We're checking that. You should be able to now.
Right. Okay. It still says it's been disabled.
I'll tell you what, sir, why don't we proceed if we can get the camera on, we'll go. Please deliver.
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, I'm very grateful to have the opportunity to offer the invocation. As moderator, Mr. Hiss just said, I was a town meeting member elected from Precinct 2 back in the late 70s when I was in high school and continued into my college years and that I had to leave the town meeting when I entered the seminary. Anyway, I'm very grateful for another reason because St. Agath is celebrating its centennial this year. And so, again, very grateful to be given this opportunity to offer this invocation at the town meeting. Let us pray. Lord our God, the world is full of your glory. You have created us human beings in your own image. We commend our town and those who reside here to your merciful care. We ask that you give our town officials and especially the members of this town meeting the wisdom and strength to know and to do what is right. Fill them with the love of truth and justice and concern for those residents of our town who are most vulnerable. May patience, respect and civility be the hallmarks of the political discourse here and inspire the residents of our town to go and do likewise in our interactions with one another. We ask your blessing, Lord, on all who are gathered here, on the deliberations that take place here and on all those for whom Milton is their home. Amen.
Thank you, Father. And it seems just as you finish up, we get your camera working, which is just the way the technology gods would want it to happen.
I guess so.
Again, thank you for joining us and thank you for your service to our town.
Very welcome. Thank you for the honor.
Okay. I think I will, I've been notified by the town clerk that we are fortunate, unfortunate report. We have not lost in passing any of our elected officials or town meeting members. I think that's very good news. I did want to pass along one brief announcement. There will be a memorial service for Ted Hayes, whom many of you may remember as a town meeting member and a member of the warrant committee and the town government study committee. He passed away within the last year and a half, I think, and COVID delayed the service. And so, that service will be at St. Michael's Church on Randolph Ave on June 18th at 10:00 a.m. So, now we'll swear in the town meeting members. So, Madam Clerk, could you approach the podium and we'll swear in the new town meeting members?
And if everybody could raise their right hand and state after me, I state your name.
I, Robert Cheetus.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To perform my duties.
To perform my duties.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
To uphold the bylaws of the town of Milton.
To uphold the bylaws of the town of Milton.
The Commonwealth of Massachusetts Constitution.
The Commonwealth of Massachusetts Constitution.
And the Constitution of the United States of America, so help you God.
And the Constitution of the United States of America, so help me God.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. I would also like to, at this point, recognize some elected officials that have served for 10 years or more. I'll briefly read their names. We have William Bennett from Precinct 6. These are, this is the 10-year class. Jean Burns from Precinct 6. Elaine Craighead, Precinct 4. Thomas Curran from Precinct 6. Ellen Denoyer from Precinct 2. Kristen LaCasse from Precinct 1. Lori McIntosh from Precinct 5. Scott Matthews from Precinct 10. Ellen O'Toole from Precinct 1. Michael O'Toole, Precinct 1. Rebecca Padera from Precinct 2 and Maureen Peterson from Precinct 10. Then serving for 20 years, we have Ms. Hyacinth Grinslow from Precinct 4. Patricia Falcarelli, Precinct 8. Daniel Galery from Precinct 6. Ruth Hayden from Precinct 6. Christine Hodland from Precinct 2. Darnell Turner from Precinct 1. And serving for 30 years, we have Mr. Brian Cronin from Precinct 4 and Mr. Brian Walsh from Precinct 8. So, thank you all for your long and steady service to our town. Tonight, you know, sometimes we have local elected officials, state or federal. None have requested permission to speak tonight. And so, having been advised by the town clerk that a majority of town meeting members are in attendance, I hereby declare a quorum is present for the transaction of business. Before proceeding with the business of the meeting, however, there are certain preliminary matters to be taken up. First, permission has been requested for certain members and personnel of the school committee, planning board, board of health and other boards, committees and departments who are not town meeting members to attend as panelists with other members of their respected boards, committees and departments upon the understanding, of course, that they will not vote. Hearing no objection from the body in the chat section. Such permission will be and hereby is accorded. Second, permission is granted to Milton Cable Vision to televise these proceedings. Third, I'll now briefly review, particularly for the benefit of new town meeting members, some of the procedural rules for the conduct of the meeting, which unless there is an objection, will be the rules for the conduct of this meeting. For some of these rules will be replaced later by the motion to conduct a remote town meeting and will seem out of place, but please bear with me. First, town meetings members are required to check in with the town clerk and be seated in the lower part of the auditorium, which is demarcated and reserved for town meeting members. Town citizens and others who are not town meeting members are required to be seated in the upper part of the auditorium. Second, any town meeting members wishing to speak to any article or pending related matter will first go to the nearest microphone and upon being recognized by the moderator will identify herself himself by giving his or her name and precinct. If you have not been recognized by the moderator, you're not permitted to speak to the meeting. On occasion, members will informally alert the moderator that they desire to be recognized to speak on a certain article. While your moderator will attempt to recognize, to remember who desires to be recognized on any article, please be advised that the only way in which a member can be sure to be recognized is to go to a microphone and wait to be recognized. Third, by longstanding tradition, while any other registered voter of the town who was not a town meeting member may not vote here at town meeting, he or she may be recognized to address town meeting, providing that the voter in advance of the particular session has obtained permission from the moderator. We have many residents who have requested and been granted such permission to speak during this annual town meeting. Fourth, any person having a monetary or equitable interest in or who is employed as an attorney or otherwise by another person interested in any matter under discussion shall disclose the fact of his or her interest or employment before speaking thereon. Fifth, with reference to each article in the warrant, the recommendation of the warrant committee shall ordinarily be considered to have been presented in the form of a motion by the chairperson, which has been seconded by the secretary or other member of the warrant committee who was a town meeting member. Unless the moderator otherwise expressly states at the time, the question to be voted on under each article will usually be whether or not to accept the recommendation of the warrant committee. In other words, generally, the recommendation of the warrant committee is the main motion pending under the article. In the event that the warrant committee recommends a no vote on an article, the question will be presented as a vote on a motion made and seconded to approve the article. Thus, members will vote yes if they favor the article and no if they oppose the article as recommended by the warrant committee. Please note that this rule is relevant during Article 47 in your warrant during this meeting. Six, pursuant to Section 4 of Chapter 2 of the town's bylaws, the moderator requires that all substantive or complex motions be reduced to writing and presented to the moderator before submission to the meeting. Seventh, by longstanding tradition, Town Meeting Time, the Handbook of Parliamentary Law, 3rd Edition, which is this book right here. In addition to the bylaws of the town of Milton and the laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts will be the rules of order for this meeting. Eighth, any member desiring to show slides, make a PowerPoint presentation or any other visual material before the meeting must make appropriate arrangements and inform the moderator. Ninth, members are urged to obtain all information needed by them prior to the meeting. However, by tradition, the moderator will recognize any town meeting member for the purpose of requesting additional information relevant to the matter under consideration. All such requests must be directed solely to the moderator, who will attempt to ascertain the most appropriate official who should answer such an inquiry. Answers will not be provided while the member still has the floor in order to prevent the temptation to cross-examine the person providing the information, which is not permitted. However, the moderator will separately recognize a member once for the purpose of posing a follow-up question. Sometimes the information is not available or is not immediately available and the request for information will simply not be fulfilled. Tenth, when it is announced by the moderator that the meeting will proceed to vote, debate will be closed and the pending question will be put to the town meeting. Eleventh, upon a question being put to the town meeting, the moderator will first determine by voice vote the sense of the meeting. If the moderator is unable to decide by the sound of the voices or if his announcement of the vote is doubted by seven town meeting members standing in their place, the moderator shall then proceed to have a standing vote on the question. If the vote is further doubted by 25 town meeting members standing in their places, then there will be a roll call of the meeting with the town clerk calling the name of each town meeting member in alphabetical order and each town meeting member, upon his/her name being called, shall rise in place and answer yes or no. Twelfth, no vote shall be reconsidered at the same meeting except upon a motion made within one hour of the adoption of such vote, unless by two-thirds vote. Provided that the time which elapses during any adjournment of the meeting shall be excluded in computing the hour since the adoption of the vote. Thirteenth, because of the constraints of state law pursuant to Proposition 2 1/2, the budget articles, as recommended by the warrant committee to this town meeting, are at the maximum tax levy limitation permitted by state law pursuant to Proposition 2 1/2. While the moderator will entertain motions to amend budget articles upward, the town's total appropriation may not exceed the Proposition 2 1/2 limit. Thus, to avoid potential chaos and the necessity for additional meetings to balance the town's appropriation within the levy limit on the amount of revenue that the town may raise by property tax, your moderator both urges and expects that any member offering an upward amendment to a budget article will also offer, for the benefit of fellow town meeting members, specify an offsetting decrease in some other line item or specify what additional source of revenue is or will be available. In addition, it is also permissible to make increased funding subject to an override ballot vote by the registered voters of the town. Fourteenth, each person speaking to an article or amendment is limited to 10 minutes and no person may speak on a question more than once when any other person desires to be heard or more than twice on the same question without permission of the town moderator. Pre-approved presentations will not necessarily be limited to 10 minutes at the discretion of the moderator. Fifteen, consent agenda rule. At least five business days prior to the opening of the first session of the annual town meeting or any special town meeting, the moderator may propose to all members a consent agenda, listing all the articles which, based on the records of recent town meetings, the moderator deems to be non-controversial. At the first session of the meeting, at the request of any five members present, any article shall be removed from the consent agenda so that it can be debated and voted upon in accordance with the provisions of Town Meeting's rules. A member requesting a motion to remove an article from the consent, pardon me, a member requesting to remove an article from the consent agenda may state the reason for the request without debate. All articles remaining in the consent agenda shall then be voted upon without debate with a two-thirds vote required for adoption. I will now proceed to the reading of the motion to conduct a remote town meeting. After I read this, if someone would say in the chat, type "so moved" and a second, then we'll go to discussion and a vote. Move that the town of Milton conduct its 2022 annual town meeting as a remote town meeting using the Zoom webinar technology as recommended by the town moderator and approved by the select board on Wednesday, May 11, 2022. Further, during the 2022 annual remote town meeting, only the following rules will be modified to conform with the limitations of the Zoom webinar technology. Rule 1 is replaced in its entirety by the following. First, town meeting members are required to register for town meeting with the town clerk and join town meeting via a computing device by clicking on the town meeting link emailed to them in advance. The town clerk will confirm their registration as they are admitted to the remote town meeting. Town citizens and others who are not town meeting members will only be admitted to the remote town meeting with prior permission of the moderator. Rule 2 is modified as follows. Second, any town meeting member wishing to speak to any article or pending related matter will first click the "raise hand" button and upon being recognized by the moderator will identify herself himself by giving his or her name and precinct. If you have not been recognized by the moderator, you are not permitted to speak to the meeting. On occasion, members will informally alert the moderator that they desire to be recognized to speak on a certain article. While your moderator will attempt to remember who desires to be recognized on any article, please be advised that the only way in which a member can be sure to be recognized is to click the "raise hand" button and wait to be recognized. Rule 11 is modified as follows. Eleventh, upon a question being put to the town meeting, the moderator will first determine by electronic vote the sense of the meeting. The moderator will display and announce the results of the electronic vote. If the vote is doubted by 25 town meeting members clicking the "raise hand" button, then there will be a roll call of the meeting with the town clerk calling the name of each town meeting member in alphabetical order and each town meeting member, upon his or her name being called, shall unmute their microphone and answer yes or no. Is there a member willing to support this motion? I see Mr. Fahey is so moved and I see Mr. Turner has seconded. With that, is there any debate? I see Ms. Agostino, if you have a question, we can recognize you.
Mr. Moderator, Diana Tulio Agostino, Precinct 9. The question I have is, and I'm not sure if maybe you did cover it and I missed it. The original initial discussion has to, if a certain, if there is a recount or a request for a roll count, a certain number of people would stand up. How do we do that during a Zoom meeting? If you could please refresh our memory.
Yes, good question. It's rule number 11. So, this is part of the motion to conduct a remote town meeting. Upon a question being put to the town meeting, the moderator will first determine by electronic vote the sense. And if the vote is doubted by 25 town meeting members clicking the "raise hand" button, then there'll be a roll call of the meeting. So, I'll watch the 25 hands in my panel here and if I count them, then we'll go to the roll call. If no other questions, I see Mr. Sivlavich and Ms. Carroll. Mr. Sivlavich, you're recognized for a question.
I don't have a question, sorry.
Okay, if you could lower your hand, that'd be helpful. And Ms. Carol Stocker, I see your hand is raised. Do you have a question on this motion to conduct a remote town meeting? Nope, the hand's gone down. Okay. I see no other questions, so we'll proceed to the vote. Zoom admin, can we put up the polling question? All those in favor of the motion before the body, please signify by voting yes. All opposed, please vote no. All abstaining, please vote abstain. And please remember to click the submit button if we could unmute the phones. Are the phones unmuted? On the phones, all those in favor of the motion before the body, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. Thank you. If you'll pardon me for a minute, folks, the town clerk has a question. I'll just be right back before we display the results.
If the person with the phone number ending in 080, could please identify themselves?
Francis Marisi, Precinct 6. Percy, Precinct 6.
Folks, you just have to move a few people to different rooms in our Zoom technology. Please just stand by. Thank you, folks. We just had to get some people into the right pool so they could vote. I see the polling is, should be complete. If we could close the poll. Is the poll voting closed, administrator? Okay, the motion carries with 98% yes and 2% no, 0% abstain. With that, I'd like to recognize Mr. Michael Sutton. Mr. Sutton is the chair of the Audit Committee. So, if we could make sure Mr. Sutton is a panelist. Per our bylaws, the chair of the Audit Committee is required to report to town meeting annually on the results of the audit.
Great. Thank you, moderator Hiss. Appreciate the opportunity to be here and represent our committee.
Thank you, sir.
Reporting to you tonight on the annual management letter report from our audit firm, which is Powers and Sullivan, they served the town for many years and our audit partner Craig Peacock. We did not have any new management letter comments this year. We can move the slide forward. This notes our audit committee. So, I serve as the chair and we have four other members of the committee, Carolyn Crystal, Steve and Chris. And each year at this meeting, we work to present recommendations from the auditor. Again, Powers and Sullivan will go forward to the next slide. So, we had six comments from the prior year. Five of those comments have been closed and one remains open. This starts with the list of the five that have been closed. Our purchase order system comment was just that all departments use the purchase order system. The fire department was the exception in the prior year. They've now been using the purchase order system. This comment is closed. We can move to the next one. I'm abandoned property tailings. This comment from the prior year has also been resolved and all outstanding checks greater than three months old has decreased significantly from the prior year and the updated policy is being followed by the town accounting department and the treasurer. Insurance withholding accounts, comment number three. There is a recommendation that Human Resources Department should reconcile withholding liability accounts to insurance bills on a monthly basis. This is now being done by the Human Resources Department. And this comment is closed. We can move to comment number four. Treasurer's manual checks, there is a recommendation that checks be used in extremely limited circumstances. And that has been also closed and resolved as there is very few examples of manual checks being used and there's an updated policy that's being followed. The fifth and final comment, which has been remedied, which is retirement system bank reconciliations. The treasurer's office and the retirement system have now formalized monthly cash reconciliation procedures and this matter is considered resolved. The final comment, which is technically still open, although our external audit firm does note that there is improvement made in this area and the remaining accounts have relatively small dollar amounts that are deemed to be immaterial. And this is related to some of the monthly reconciliations between the cash books and the bank statements. Moderator Hiss, that would conclude the remarks we have on behalf of the Audit Committee for this year. And there, we make a note that there's no new management letter comments for this year, which is a great result.
Mr. Sutton, my thanks to you and the committee for the hard work you're doing, your service to our town. It's a very encouraging report.
Great.
With that, I'd like to recognize Mr. Brian Walsh. Mr. Walsh is the Chair of the Fire Station Building Committee. He's going to give us a brief verbal update on progress of his committee's work. Mr. Walsh, should be a panelist. We can turn on your camera if you'd like and please address the body.
Thank you, Mr. Hiss. Sorry for that delay. I, Walsh, can you hear me, Mr. Moderator?
Yes, we can.
I, Walsh, Precinct 8, town meeting member and Fire Station Building Committee Chairman. Mr. Moderator, I just have a couple of quick remarks, but I, having had Father Palladi give us the opening prayer, I don't know if he's still listening, but on behalf of the town meeting members and Fire Station Building Committee, I'd like to thank Father Palladi and the parish of St. Agath who have allowed us to purchase a piece of land that I think will be, that will be the new East Milton Fire Station. And I think it will serve the committee, the community extremely well. And I think even neighbors that might have some apprehension, I that those firefighters nest. Neighborhood. So, Father Palladi, it's not easy to do something like that. He's to be thanked and it's a great... So, I have some exciting news for the town meeting members, Mr. Moderator. The low bidder for the construction project to rebuild the fire station headquarters was G and R Construction out of Hanover, Mass. G and R is the same contractor that built, recently built the Milton Library. And they did a terrific job on that. Most of the community is thrilled with the way their library come out. They have several fire stations that they have built, also done extremely well. They've worked with both our OPM and our architect on past projects and they are both thrilled with the opportunity to work with them. We have and will continue to work with the Milton Center Neighborhood Association as we take on the construction of the headquarters project. In fact, we just met with them a week ago, last Monday night. I, the exciting news, I think after over 100 years with the headquarters, work will begin in June to rebuild the new fire station headquarters. And we will have, we've invited lastly the four past fire chiefs to join us at the ceremonial groundbreaking, which will be held Tuesday, June 14th at 9:00 a.m. Certainly, anyone interested is more than welcome. And I just, I'd like to conclude, Mr. Moderator, with your permission, just to thank you and thank the town meeting members and the select board for your continued support, your past support. And these are exciting times and I, thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Pardon me, I was on mute. Mr. Walsh, thank you for the hard work of the committee and for your remarks, and we very much appreciate the update. Well, that will now proceed to the business of the meeting. I'd like to recognize Mr. George Asher, who was the Chair of the Warrant Commission, pardon me, Warrant Committee. Mr. Asher, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. George Asher, Chair, Warrant Committee, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Six. I'm going to depart a little bit from the usual format that I have employed in the last few years as I want to discuss the Warrant Committee's procedure and personnel to some extent. Following the kind and gracious remarks that were made about the Warrant Committee at the special town meeting in February, I thought it might be particularly important to discuss and to present how we do what we do and to enlighten the members of the town meeting that we work for you, we do our best for you, and that our work is as objective as it can be. Lynn, can I have the next slide, please? So I will talk about that first off and next bullet point. Then some brief comments about the budget that we just reviewed. And then following that, talk about the major expenses and how the budget breaks down, and then offer some observations from our commentary that's been accumulated over the past several months. Next slide. The Warrant Committee, as you all know, is made up of fifteen members that are appointed by the town moderator after a very deliberate and very careful review of applications to represent as well as possible the political, the professional, the demographic, and other concerns of the town, and have the different areas of the town represented as fairly and effectively as possible. To this end, the town has on its Warrant Committee people who represent many different professions. Finance, accounting, several lawyers, registered nurses, people who run their own businesses, educators, and from time to time, retired men and women who have given their time to do as much for the town as they can. Our discussions are generally apolitical. I realize that we all bring to the town meeting and to these meetings our own perspectives and our own points of view, but generally speaking, it is a committee that conducts its discussions in as apolitical manner as possible and in as I would like to say, as open and respectfully a manner as possible, given the toxicity that exists in political deliberations in other parts of the country. I like to think that we have been able to maintain, for the most part, a very congenial, very respectful way of disagreement. We don't agree on everything. No, no two-thinking people will always agree on everything, and when you get a group of fifteen well and well-educated, motivated, highly intelligent, and interested people, you can imagine that we do have many lively discussions. We meet frequently during the past year. The Warrant Committee met forty-one times. I did not tabulate the frequency of meetings of other boards of the town, but I, I think with the exception of the Select Board, we met more than most others. Our meetings, generally speaking, are as efficient as they can be. I like to conduct the business and give everybody the opportunity to speak who has requested that chance. I should also educate others about the Warrant Committee. We are not obliged to have anyone at the meeting other than the members. To have guests come in and speak is considered, we consider it necessary, but it is in fact a privilege. It is not a place for citizens speak, and we encourage people to come, but to ask if they can speak and to make sure that their comments are to the point and in accordance with the agenda that we published in order to make our meetings as efficient and as effective as possible. When our meetings do require it, we will stay and do what we have to do. Several of our meetings exceeded three hours in length. I mean, the length of a meeting doesn't necessarily indicate the quality of the meeting, but it is an indicator that we did spend time discussing subjects and made as many points of view available as possible. The Warrant Committee functions as effectively the research arm of the town meeting. It is our privilege to offer the town meeting our recommendations, but that is only what they are. They are recommendations. You, the town meeting members, take our recommendations and do what you will with them. It is my observation that most of the time the recommendations are accepted. They can be amended. They have been rejected from time to time. But I think on, on the whole, many members of the town meeting understand that we put in time to understand the issue, to analyze them, to give as much airtime to the points of view that would have an influence on these discussions and to come to as reasonable a recommendation, given the information at our disposal as possible. Next slide, please, Lynn. In fiscal year 2023, you've all received the audit from the town, the town annual report and the warrant that includes the numbers. Our expenditures this year fiscal projected for 2023 will be over a hundred thirty-nine million dollars, which represents effectively a five-point-three percent increase, five-point-two percent increase over the last fiscal year. The budget recommendations were balanced partially because of the allocations from the American Rescue Plan Act and other sources that came in. Of note is that the Milton Public Schools increase was was, sorry, this year was fifty-eight-point-four million versus last year's fifty-four-point-eight. That is a six percent increase. The general town budget items in many others were much lower than that. In fact, several of them declined. Public safety, for example, was effectively flat with last year. So we like to think that we have been as accommodating to the needs of the Milton Public School as possible. We did have several meetings, which included members of the school committee where we discussed the budget. And I know that they're going to present later, but the recommendation that we make to accept the town budget for the Milton Public Schools as presented is following a great deal of discussion and trying as well as we could to meet the needs of the school department as they have identified them. Correspondingly, we found money in the budget. The town found money in the budget, which we recommended to restore a lot of funding to other areas and other departments of the town, which had not been able to make the, have the recommendations accepted. Lynn, do you want to give us the next slide? And we can see the pie chart here. As you can see, the distribution of expenses around the town stays reasonably close year to year. What is important to note is that the school department is still the lion's share. It is obviously the largest employer and dealing with the issues they have and promoting education and the achievement of excellence is something that doesn't come cheaply. But as you can see, the stewardship that the town administrator and the town departments have in making really kind of incredible things happen with very little money, and I identify not just the library doing an excellent job on, on a very spare budget, relatively speaking, but also parks and rec, public safety, and the public safety, which includes both police and fire and the municipal workers themselves, who put in a great deal of time and serve the town extremely well. It's our observation that the, the town is managed in as, in as efficient a manner as possible, given the funds that are available. Next slide, please, Lynn. The observation that I make is that as we construct the fire station, as in contemplating an additional school, operating overhead is going to expand dramatically. Next bullet point. And that we are relatively constrained because of property tax revenues in Proposition Two and a Half. I, I've spoken about this for the last couple of years, and fortunately, we keep kicking the can down the road. An override is a likely thing that might be in the offing within the next two or three years, and the next bullet point will indicate that dependence on assistance, both from the Commonwealth and the federal government, isn't always going to be there. So the offsetting guarantees to the funding needs for revenues and the growth in the town expenses still is dependent on the property tax levy. And to diversify this base of revenue is a very difficult prospect. We've talked about this. One thing I did not include, which I have in past years, is the idea of a payment in lieu of taxes from our friends in the not-for-profits, large not-for-profits that operate in town, including Milton Hospital, Milton Academy, Curry College. Of those three, Curry College is the only one that contributes in a meaningful way. Milton Academy makes facilities available. Milton Hospital hasn't given a nickel and has not even engaged in the conversation, which is an area we have identified in the past. Last slide, please, Lynn. In closing, I have chaired the Warrant Committee for five years. This is my last town meeting, annual town meeting, at which I will be Chair and speak to you all. It has been my pleasure and my honor to do this, this town where I grew up, and to witness as it evolves into a town in the twenty-first century, hoping that we will maintain what has made this town desirable as a place to live, but to keep our eyes and ears open to the possibilities that will make Milton a wonderful place to be in the twenty-first century for our children and our grandchildren. It takes effort. It takes common sense. And there's no shortage of challenges that we have to face as a community. But it is my hope that we continue to engage in the conversation, but engage in the conversation in a civil manner. With respect, we are all neighbors, and our interest is to maintain Milton as a great place to live and a place where our children will be proud to live someday as well. Mr. Moderator, that concludes my comments. I also want to thank the members of the Warrant Committee who have been remarkably devoted and dedicated in the time they've allocated to coming up with this warrant report and the work that they have put in. The town is a better place for the dedication and for their contribution. So thank you all very much, and we'll look forward to the discussion of this, the articles that you see presented before you.
Very good. Mr. Asher, thank you for your remarks and for the hard work of the Warrant Committee. It's much, much noticed and appreciated. With that, I'd like to recognize Mr. Arthur Doyle, who's the Chair of the Select Board, who has some opening remarks from the Select Board. We can have Mr. Doyle be on camera, and so you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Arthur Doyle, Select Board and Precinct Seven member. Good evening, members of the town meeting and members of the Milton community. In opening these brief remarks, it is a privilege to introduce to town meeting the two newly elected members of the Milton Select Board, Aaron Bradley and Roxanne Musto. Recognition also goes to all who were elected to town positions. The many community members who participated in our election process and those who serviced our election, our precinct wardens, clerics, and tellers. It is likewise important to acknowledge our two recently retired members of the Select Board, both of whom served admirably as Chair during a global pandemic. Katie Conlon and Melinda Collins. There are many others to thank for their service to Milton during those two years. To name but a few, Board of Health Director Carolyn Kinsella, Town Clerk Susan Galvin, our Moderator, Mr. Hess, our Warrant Committee Chair, Mr. Asher, DPW Director Chase Berkeley, Police Chief King, Fire Chief Madden, indeed, all our town employees and all our elected and appointed board and committee members. In his great work on America, the renowned French observer of our early nation, Alexis de Tocqueville, singled out the volunteerism of its citizens, indicating that they are unparalleled in producing a remarkable national trait. That honorable trait of American volunteerism never wavered in Milton during the past two years. And now, if I may, two additional recognitions. Newly elected Town Meeting Member Michael Dennehy, who served Milton as Town Administrator for over five years, and so ably during the pandemic. And former Town Administrator Anne Marie Fagan, who came out of retirement at the request of the Select Board to serve as interim Town Administrator while a search is underway for a permanent Town Administrator. Milton is extremely fortunate to have her experience once again in service to our community. Finally, and speaking only for myself, once this annual town meeting is gavelled or closed by our moderator, very hard work will have to begin immediately on fiscal year twenty-four planning and finances and pragmatically for the several following fiscal years. Some of these comments will echo what you heard moments ago from Mr. Asher. The fiscal year twenty-three budget before us benefits from sound oversight by all involved, something that continues a strong tradition in our community. However, as we saw in reading the report of the Warrant Committee, funding resources from the federal government, and most notably, the more than eight million dollars allocated to Milton through the American Rescue Plan Act, known as AOPA, greatly aided in making possible the fiscal year twenty-three budget and its services in the public interests before us. While some of those AOPA funds will carry into fiscal year twenty-four, they very well may not be sufficient to level fund a fiscal year twenty-four budget, particularly when combined with the economic backdrop cited in the Warrant Committee report. The prospect of preparing for an upcoming override surfaces as a realistic vehicle to sustain the quality of our community in the presence of increasing internal and external demands and expectations. So, yes, there are grappling matters at hand. We can meet them with a collective will for resolution. All of us, working together for this town as a whole, with foresight, cooperation, compromise, civility, and synergy as our tools. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Doyle. With that, ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to proceed to the consent agenda. So Lynn, can we put up the consent agenda? I'll just remind everyone how this process works. What I'll do is I'll read these items row by row, just referring to the number in the title. And then I'm going to look in the, in the participant panel. And if I see five hands raised, I'll know that five members are asking that that article be struck from the consent agenda. You don't need to give a reason why. Just the five hands is all we'll look for. I'll strike it, and then at the conclusion, I'll go back and reconfirm all the articles that remain, and then without any discussion, we'll call for a vote, and it requires a two-thirds vote. So with that, Article One, he reported of town officers. Any objections? I see none. Article Two, authorized treasurer to collect taxes. Any objections? I see none. Article Three, authorized treasurer to enter into compensating balance agreements. Any objections? I see none. Skipping four, Article Five, audit appropriation. Any objections? I see none. Article Six, Union Wage Set-Aide Appropriation. Any objections? I see none. Article Seven, Employee Benefits Appropriation. Any objections? I see none. Article Nine, Unemployment Benefits Appropriation. Any objections? I see none. Article Ten, Chapter Thirteen, Position Classifications and Wage Increases. I see one, two, three, four, five. Okay, very good. I'll strike chap, Article Ten. Article Eleven, Public Safety Appropriation. Any objections? I see one, two, three, four, five. Okay, we have enough on public safety. Article Twelve, General Government Appropriation. Are there any objections? I see one, two, three, four, five. Okay. Article Twelve, let's strike that. I'll go to Article Fifteen, Boards and Committee Appropriation. Any objections? See one, two, three, four, five. Okay, we can strike fifteen. Eighteen, Public Works Appropriation. Any objections? See one. I just see one. Okay, Article eighteen would remain. Article nineteen, Water Enterprise Fund Appropriation. Any objections? I see one. I see no others, just one. Okay, Article nineteen would remain. Article Twenty-two, Stormwater Enterprise Fund Appropriation. Any objections? I see one. Any others? Okay, I just see the one. Thank you. Article twenty-nine, Public Library Appropriation. Any objections? I see no objections. Article thirty, Cemetery Appropriation. Article 30, cemetery appropriation, any objections? I see none. Okay. Article 32, park department appropriation, any objections? I see none. Article 35, Blue Hills Regional Technical School appropriation, any objections? I see none. Article 36, consolidated facilities appropriation, any objections? I see none. Article 37, interest and maturing debt appropriation, any objections? I see none. Article 38, stabilization fund appropriation, any objections? I see none. Article 40, reserve fund appropriation, any objections? I see none. Article 41, revolving fund appropriation, any objections? I see none. Article 42, affordable housing trust appropriation, I see one objection. I see 2. I see 3. I see 4. Yep, okay, we crossed the line on 42, that's removed. Article 43, peg access and cable related fund appropriation, any objections? I see 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. Okay, we'll remove Article 43. And last is Article 45, authorized select board to accept easements, any objections? I see none. Okay, thank you, ladies and gentlemen. I'll go back and confirm the items one by one. So the following items will remain in the consent agenda. I'm only going to list the ones that remain, they're the ones you're going to vote on. They're Article 1, 2, 3, 5, 6, 7, 9, 18, 19, 22, 29, 30, 32, 35, 36, 37, 38, 40, 41, 45. Are there any clarifications on my list? Madam Clerk, you confirm what I've got? Madam Clerk confirms? Right, very good. Since there's, I see no questions on that list, we can now proceed to the vote. Do we have everybody that we need to have in the attendee pool, Mr. Zoom Administrator? Pardon us, folks, we've got a couple duplicate names, we just have to clean up the voting pool for just a moment, so if you'll bear with us.
Yes, we have two Barbara Martins, who are last name Martin and have a different first name, and there are two of you, please let us know. I also have two Nora Harringtons, two Ellen Aherns.
So what's the request?
If, if those people can please respond to Q and A and let us know why they have two names, or if they're on two computers, or if they have a husband who is also a town, another member of the family, it's Town Meeting member using the same name, we have to change the name. Also, we have two Kevin Keatings.
Thank you, Ms. Harrington. Ms. Ahern, we see your text, thank you. Who else do we have? Mr. Zoom, Edmund?
Ms. Ahern, if you could just sign out on the iPad, then that would be great, thank you. And we, so we do have two Kevin Donnies, we know there's a senior and a non-senior, so if you could just change your name, you can right-click and change your name on there. And if Richard Shea could clarify. Richard W., please. And I have two Ellen Aherns. If you could please message in Q and A. Ms. Ahern, if you could please raise your hand on the device you plan to use. Again, if the Richard Shea that's on the call could please specify if they're middle initial J or W.
All right, thank you, folks, for that brief detour while we just verified the accuracy of our voting list. Edmund, if we could put up the poll? All those in favor of the motion for the body, please signify by voting yes. All opposed, please vote no. All abstaining, please vote abstain, and please remember to click submit at the end, if we could unmute the phones. Yes? On the phone, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? Thank you, we can mute the phones. And I think we can close the poll. The motion carries with a vote of 100% yes, with zero noes and zero abstains, thank you very much. So with that, ladies and gentlemen, let me jump to Article 4, which you should be able to find on page 11 of your warrant. Now, there was a green sheet that was distributed to members and posted. I will then read from the green sheet. Recommended that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $6,850,050 to fund the capital projects listed below. Parks and Recs 1,600, Facilities 150, Facilities 700, Facility School 230, Facility Schools 32, Technology School 52, Technology School 441, 550, Technology School 285, DPW 800,000, DPW 70,000, Police 150,000, Information Technology 300,000, Fire 1.6 million. Subtotal recommended bonded items, $6,154,050. Non-bonded capital items include DPW projects for 30,000, DPW water for 78, Police 462,000, Fire for 26,000, Parks and Recs for 400,000. Subtotal recommended non-bonded capital items, $696,000. Total recommended capital items, $6,850,050. And that to me said appropriation of treasure with the approval of the Select Board is authorized to sell and issue bonds or notes to the town, averaging not more than $6,154,050 under and pursuant to the provisions of Chapter 44, Section 7 of Mass General Laws as amended or any other enabling authority for the purposes listed under the heading bonded capital items, including the payment of costs incidental and related thereto, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore, and that in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 20 of the General Laws, the premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or notes thereunder unless any such premium applied to the payment of the costs of issuance of such bonds or notes may be applied to pay project costs, and the amount borrowed for each such project shall be reduced by the amount of any such premium so applied, and that the Select Board be and hereby is authorized to accept and expend in addition to the foregoing appropriation one or more grants or gifts from any other public or private funding source, and that the sum of $483,300 be appropriated from funds certified by the Department of Revenue as free cash for purposes listed under the heading non-bonded capital items, and the sum of $134,700 be transferred from the special revenue bond premium account, and $78,000 be appropriated from funds certified by the Department of Revenue as retained earnings from the Water Enterprise Fund. This has bonding, so it requires a two-thirds vote. I'd like to first start by recognizing Arthur Doyle of the Select Board. Mr. Doyle, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. While others may address this particular article, I thought it might be important to provide some background as to the green sheet. Following certification of fiscal year 22 free cash and its allocation to the fiscal year 23 budget, two fiscal year 21 journal entry oversights were discovered. One transferred $219,589 from the general fund to the special purpose debt stabilization fund, and the other $75,000 from the general fund to the capital projects fund. As they were not processed at year end, the resulting effect was a higher free cash number. Because of these two oversights, the town then needed to reduce the fiscal year 22 free cash certification by $294,589. This resulted in adjustments to two articles, this article, Article 4, and Article 39. The Article 4 change eliminated from the non-bonded capital projects the $231,970 for the animal shelter that was to be appropriated from free cash, thereby reducing the total recommended capital funding from $7,082,020 to $6,850,050. This said, notes should be made that Article 4 retains the $700,000 for the animal shelter among the recommended bonded capital items. Again, it had been hoped to add an additional $231,970 in non-bonded funds to the recommended bonded funding, but the adjustment had to be made because of the oversight with respect to the fiscal year 21 journal entries. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Chairman Doyle. With that, by prior agreement, I'd like to recognize Mr. Scott McKay. Some questions had come in from members about one of the appropriations, and Mr. McKay has some comments, and I think he's got some slides as well. So, Mr. McKay, let's get you in the panelist, and there we go, we'll recognize you. Rex, and Mr. McKay, you can just speak to these without having to be on camera, if you're ready to go.
Can you hear me, Mr. Moderator?
Yes, we can.
All right, very good.
Thank you.
My name is Scott McKay, I'm a Town Meeting Member out of Precinct 2, and I am a former member of the Board of Park Commissioners, and I'm here tonight to speak to the $1.6 million in bonded capital for the Lower Guile Field Reconstruction Project, as well as the $400,000 of non-bonded capital for the Lower Guile Field Reconstruction Project. I was asked, or Parks and Recreation and the Board of Park Commissioners was asked by surrounding neighborhood folks to give a presentation to explain to Town Meeting what this funds, what these funds are going to be used for. If you can look at Slide 1, this is where the project is going to be happening. It's on the high school campus, which has three levels, with the high school being at the top. It goes down a slope to Middle Guile Fields, and then down to the, down the slope to Lower Guile Field and Donovan Field, and then eventually goes into the Brook, if you can change the, to the next slide. And a zoomed-in look at Guile Field, Piattelli Field is at the bottom of your screen, and Donovan Field is in the top right-hand side of your screen. And the, the large rectangular area in the middle is what we're talking about. This is Lower Guile, or we're referred to as Lower Guile. Next slide, please. Lower Guile Field was constructed when the high school was built back in 2003, and typical grass fields like this have a useful life of about eight to 10 years. Next slide, please. Based on drainage issues at the high school and heavy usage on this field, the grass field at this location has experienced a useful life of about six or seven years. This field was last reconstructed in 2011, or 11 years ago. Next slide, please. And the current conditions make this field virtually unusable and relatively dangerous for use as a sports field. So what is proposed on this site? The location of this field is in a fairly tight space, as is most open space in the town of Milton. There's not a lot of extra land to expand on the existing footprint of this field. Last fiscal year, the Capital Committee allocated $100,000 to Parks and Recreation to study the viability of this location. To reconstruct it is either a grass field, a synthetic football field only, given the restrictive site parameters, or as a synthetic field for regulation-sized multi-sport use. Huntress Associates, Inc. was hired, next slide, please. They performed an extensive existing site analysis, a survey, a geotechnical study, and they developed preliminary designs and engineering services for the town. In December 2021, Huntress concluded their report and presented it to the Capital Committee. And copies of the full presentation and all the studies that were performed by Huntress can be found on the Parks and Recreation page of the town's website for anyone to review. Next slide, please. The report concluded that the space was adequate in size to accommodate a multi-sport field, and based on a set of predetermined criteria, including expected field usage, available playing time, weather and site conditions, dependency, safety, injury, maintenance costs, and the impact on the environment, Park selected the synthetic turf multi-sport field option. Slide 8, please, next slide. This regulation fields can accommodate football, soccer, lacrosse, field hockey, and can be used by other sports for practice space. So with that decision, Parks and Rec and Huntress Associates were concerned with selecting a product with the least impact on the environmental sensitivities of this specific location being so close to the Brook. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. Traditional turf field products are made of semi recyclable products. If you look on the right hand side, that is a traditional turf field that has a polyurethane backing, and the green grass like material is bonded to that polyurethane with an adhesive. So the green grass like portion of a traditional turf field is recyclable, but the polyurethane portion is not. And the infill used on these traditional turf fields is called crumb rubber, and it's made of shredded reused rubber tires, which would not work given the location of this field. So for this project, a woven synthetic turf was chosen. That's the picture on the left. It's a grass, the grass like part of the turf is actually woven into a one hundred percent recyclable backing, and it eliminates the polyurethane and bonding adhesive. Next slide, please. And the infill chosen, the infill for, for the material we chose and was called Brockfill, which is an organic pine wood particle. It is also one hundred percent recyclable, and it eliminates the need for crumb rubber. It also reduces the heat on the fields from a traditional synthetic turf field by about thirty three degrees. Next slide, please. So, actually, next slide, please. What are the next steps here? The field design of this project, meaning the feasibility site preparation intended projects and specifications are about ninety percent complete. Next slide. So what does that mean in terms of final design and a project timeline? There are still about six months left for the final design and permitting remains until the, the project begins. Perfect. So at the turn of this year, we will be going into selecting or putting out to bid for selection the, for the contractors that will wrap up sometime in February, and construction on this, this field will begin sometime in the spring, and we'll go through the summer to wrap up some more around September of twenty twenty three. I just wanted to take the chance on behalf of the, the Park Commissioners and the Parks and Rec Department. I, I want to commend Huntress Associates for the work they've done so far in this. They provided the town with precisely, precisely what was asked for, you know, maximizing the limited space that we have in suggesting and, and budgeting for materials that were environmentally sound. And I also wanted to commend the representatives of the Pine Tree Brook and Blue Hills Parkway Neighborhood for stepping forward to represent the interests and concerns of the neighborhood. We, we've had several meetings over the past month or so, and that was at the, the recommendation and request of those folks, and I just wanted to, again, convey on the part of the Board of Park Commissioners that this project will be a better project with their involvement. And to demonstrate their commitment to the neighborhood, the board intends on entering into a good neighbor agreement, committing to the three things that are listed here. So prior to submitting any application for final construction permits, the Board of Park Commissioners and the engineer will host two public neighborhood meetings to introduce the plans for this project and solicit feedback, and creating a standing agenda item for this project on the meeting of the Board of Park Commissioners monthly meeting, and also a few folks will talk about the initial concerns of the neighbors that we, the Board of Park Commissioners has committed to, to coming to resolution on those. And like I said, this, it's at about ninety percent construction documents now, so there is still time to garner community input, to influence what the final project is going to look like. So I just wanted to thank everyone for their time and consideration in funding this project.
Thank you, Mr. McKay. Does anyone wish to speak to this article? I see two hands up, Ms. Margaret Carell's and Mr. Douglas Heine. By the way, before I go there, we have a phone number, phone number seven zero six. Could you unmute and identify yourself, ending in seven zero six?
John Karenin, Precinct Six.
Thank you, sir. With that, I will go to Ms., is it Carell's or Carrolls? You're recognized, ma'am. Ms. Carell's, you can unmute. There we go.
Mr. Moderator. Margaret Carrolls, Precinct Four, and I'd like to speak on the Lower Guile Road Field, Field Reconstruction Project. And first of all, thanks to Scott McKay for that presentation. I live off of Audubon Road, my street dead ends right on the Brook, and the proposed field project is on the other side of the Brook. First, let me say, I was on the Board of Milton Soccer for twelve years, and I understand very well the need for fields. As Scott showed you, this field is barely playable for even one season a year. I walk by it almost every day, and I've seen the Parks Department try to make this field work for years to no avail. It is true that turf, a turf multi use field here would really benefit the town. However, as Scott said, there are concerns. Over the past few months, I've been asking my neighbors and fellow Precinct Four residents about the turf field in general, and here are the, I've gotten mixed responses. Some think it's great, some not so much, and I've put together the concerns that I and other neighbors have. Number one, environmental. Synthetic turf has its issues. Trying to perpetually rehab a field where grass barely grows also has its environmental problems. I was happy to see that we will not be using crumb rubber as the fill or dirt on this field. The fill that Scott described seems like a much better option environmentally, and the, the neighbors and us will continue to do our due diligence to make sure that there is a net neutral or even positive environmental impact of this project. We would also like to see as few trees come down as possible, as well as new trees added, if not in this phase, then in future phases of this project. Number two is flooding. The neighborhoods surrounding this area, particularly along the Brook, are already prone to flooding. It's critical that this project and the school project not contribute to this problem, as well as take into account increases in flooding risk due to overall warming temperatures and extreme weather events. Some of my research has led me to places that have used parks as stormwater catchment areas in an effort to decrease the incidence of flooding. This project should not go forward without taking this opportunity to help our neighborhood if such opportunity exists. Number three, light and sound impacts on surrounding neighborhoods. The plans we saw included a press box, lighting, and a sound system. I understand the need for lighting in order to extend the playing time. There have been temporary lights on these fields for years. We would want permanent lights installed in a way that minimally impacts the neighbors and have strict time limits. I'm not quite sure why a sound system is needed, but it is something we will work on with the Commissioners. And finally, preserving the pedestrian way for those walking and riding to and from school, as well as for those using the paths for recreation, and building town amenities that benefit everyone. We have a tragic history in our country of excluding black and brown kids from playgrounds and other spaces. We have progressed since then, but not far enough. The structures we put in place, the rules, the policies, sometimes still have the effect of telling people, marginalized people, poor people, girls, you don't belong here. These spaces are about the very basic need to belong. I fully understand the monetary cost and risk of having a field that is open to the public, but we have to look at the cost of not having it open. Is this going to be another space that isn't for everyone? Dozens and dozens of students walk through our neighborhood, across the bridge, over the Brook, and up to their high school. This is their entrance to their school campus. Is the first thing they're, they see going to be a locked chain link fence surrounding yet another field that they may not ever get the opportunity to use because they don't have the time, the money, the transportation to participate in organized leagues? Imagine if that was your kid. Now imagine what else this field could be used for. How about a neighborhood pickup game of football? How about a place for kids to run and make up a game of their own? How about a family game of soccer on Thanksgiving Day? And maybe you run into another family and play together? Or maybe it's just for laying on your back and staring up at the sky? Let's not build another space that is about exclusion. Let's build a space that is about inclusion. I'd like to thank Kevin Crissom, Director of Parks, Scott McKay, and the Parks Commissioners for committing to open community meetings over the next few weeks, and for working with the neighbors on making this the best and safest possible project for all of Milton if this article passes. I believe that together we can make that happen. I will be voting in favor for this article. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. I see a few hands raised. We have Mr. Heine, Ms. McCarthy, Ms. Agostino, and Ms. Milbauer. So we'll go to Mr. Douglas Heine, sir, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Doug Heine, Precinct Two. I, I had a, a thought that last year we had allocated some money to, toward lower jail reconstruction. I, I'm just reviewing the, the warrant from the annual meeting twenty twenty one, and I do note that there was a hundred thousand dollars allocated. My, my memory of that conversation was that it was to address drainage issues. I, I don't think it was struck from that article, but I wondered if, if someone could comment on whether that, that bonded capital item was, did remain from last year, whether it was acted upon, because I haven't noticed any work done on the field, but I had that question. And then just as, as a comment, very briefly, I, I think I would still support this article, having been on this field, coached on this field. It's, it's an injury risk, and I think it would be a real asset to the community. Thank you.
Okay. So the specific question is, was there under lower guile field reconstruction bonded item last year? And was, was the work started, or did we fund it last year?
I guess really both.
Both? Okay. Let me see. Perhaps, Mr. Actually, the warrant committee, do you happen to know that answer off the top of your head? And if not, I might go to Mr. Doyle to see if the select board might know someone that knows that answer.
Thank you, Ms. Moderator. Select Board Member Wells would be prepared to answer that question for you.
Thank you, Mr. Wells, you're recognized. Mr. Moderator? You can just speak right from your microphone if you're ready to go.
Mr. Moderator, I believe he is not.
I'm, I'm unmuted now. I am.
Very good.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Good evening, Mr. Moderator. Yes, the hundred thousand dollars that was presented and voted by the Capitol Committee, and then subsequently the twenty twenty one town meeting, was the hundred thousand dollars to do as Mr. McKay had mentioned in his presentation, the study and the feasibility to include any drainage issues. It wasn't for actual physical work. To the concerns of Ms. Carell's, the Park Commissioners clearly understand that any drainage issues, and particularly the proximity to the Pine Tree Brook, are things that had to be considered. So in their studies with that hundred thousand, they've done, and as Mr. McKay stated, it's true, they're about ninety percent done through that project right now, a hundred thousand dollar appropriation from last year. I hope that answers your question.
Thank you. So to Mr. Heine's question, it was, it was funded and ninety percent complete? I think I heard that.
Yes, you did.
Very good. Okay, I see Mr. Heine, his, any follow up, Mr. Heine, or you're good?
No, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Next, we'll go to Ms. Colleen McCarthy. Ma'am, you're recognized.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Hi, Colleen McCarthy, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Four. I guess this is a question, a clarification question for Scott, and I apologize if you shared this on the, on the, on the picture there on the plans, but does the plan as it stands now include the Donovan baseball field that's adjacent to that large field or no?
Are there any other questions, ma'am, or is that just your one?
That's my one, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. McKay, can you answer that question?
It, it does not include anything for Donovan Field. The material that's going to be used on this field has a six to an eight inch area that can absorb drainage before it actually, this particular field will absorb water, whereas a turf and grass field, a, a lot of water will stay on the top and tend to run in pool in certain places. So while it's not going to address Donovan Field, some of the water that, that eventually ends up on Donovan Field will be absorbed by this turf material.
All right. Thank you, sir. I see Ms. McCarthy's hand is down, so we go to, we have Ms. Agostino and Ms. Milbauer. Ms. Agostino, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Diana Tulio Agostino, Precinct Nine. And while I don't live near this area, I often talk to many of the residents over there. And I'd like to make a request to the Parks and Recreation Board. It really would go a long way for some, if not all, the board members to meet with the neighbors on site to, I mean, it's free. Opening lines of communication is really all that's an additional free item to be added here. These neighbors, you know, with the sound system, the lights, they do endure a lot, they understand the reason for it, and I really, my neighborhood recently met with the Traffic Commission on site, and amazing things started happening the next day, and some of you may have noticed some of the new signs of Randolph F. So if we could open the lines of communication, instead of, you know, waiting for them to show up at one of your meetings and speak, and citizen speak, it would go a long way. Obviously, we're all supporting this article and this particular project, but I really implore you to meet with the neighbors and try to alleviate their concerns as best you can. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
I just, I'd just like to answer, respond to that. There was a, a park commissioners meeting this morning to discuss that very topic, and actually Margaret Carrolls did make that request to us, and that's something that the Board of Park Commissioners is going to commit to, is actually doing a site walkthrough with some, some representatives from the neighborhood. I think there's a lot of good things that can happen with this project, and like I said, we're only ninety percent designed, so now is the time to garner that involvement from the neighborhood and make it the best project we can.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I see Ms. Milbauer, and then looks like Ms. McCarthy has a follow up. Ms. Milbauer, you're recognized.
Deborah Milbauer, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Four. I'm also an abutter to the Brook. I help with the Pine Tree Brook Neighborhood Association, and I want to echo Margaret's comments around inclusion. One of the, I, I was part of the group that's raised concerns about lack of community input, and so took a little bit of convincing, but I am going to vote in support of funding this project because there were agreements put in place in terms of the good neighbor agreement, in terms of holding two community meetings for our neighborhood, for the abutters. They also offered to put, to put this agenda item on their meeting as a standing agenda item, so we can come to their meetings and talk about it regularly, and I do appreciate how flexible and open the Commissioners have been, how helpful Scott has been in responding to our urgent concerns, and we asked for this presentation because we really had no information. My issue is one of transparency. On the article, on the article in this printed warrant, it doesn't even say turf anywhere. It just says reconstruction, so nobody really would have known unless you sort of attend those commissioner meetings. And so I'm grateful that at the last minute they pivoted and they were able to accommodate our requests for information, and this has been a great presentation. And I am greatly relieved that the engineers and the, the engineers decided to use Brockfill, which is the brand name for that. the engineers and the engineers decided to use Brock fill, which is the brand name for that the synthetic material that's the filler that goes in the turf that's not the crumb rubber. Now, crumb rubber is basically recycled, basically rubber tires, which has been banned from burning. A lot of towns ban turf fields using crumb rubber. There's something in it called PFAS, among many other chemicals known to harm human health. PFAS is otherwise known as forever chemicals because they persist in the environment indefinitely and harm human health and the environment. Lots of reasons why it's not good. So we're all in agreement. It's a big relief. They didn't use Brock fill, but I will tell you that part of the lack of community input and feedback and awareness resulted in the Little League field that was literally just put in feet away. It's at the top, there's a little hill, and the Little League field that you showed in your presentation, Scott, is just a few feet away from where this new turf is being put in. And that field does have the crumb rubber fill. That was a synthetic turf choice. The product is a synthetic crumb rubber, which will runoff into the brook and does have environmental impact and also health impact. You know, there's some public health research to show that long-term exposure to this is really not good for kids and athletes and people who are exposed regularly over years. And many towns are passing ordinances to ban this crumb rubber turf, including, for example, Martha's Vineyard, just one month ago, their planning board, the Oaks Bluff Planning Board banned putting in one of those crumb rubber turf fields because it sits over an aquifer, a drink with water, where their drinking water comes from. And now they're working on a ban to ban crumb rubber turf in all of Martha's Vineyard. So I'm very upset that the Little League process went under the radar and that the town wasn't involved in in looking at what kind of product was used. And so part of why I was so concerned about this project was thinking, oh, my goodness, is there going to be a second field right next to it that's also crumb rubber, which is bad for the environment and human health? And so I'm so happy to hear that this this is not using the crumb rubber. But we just had a field put in that is literally a month ago. I think they just started the games there, and I'm happy that the kids have, well, the boys, I should say, I'm happy that the boys have a new field. I'm glad that the Little League was able to raise the money so quickly, and it's always good to have good facilities. And I don't want to take away from the boys, but it's the the choice of chemical and the lack of oversight into allowing that to happen is very concerning to me as a neighbor. And so that's why I'm exceptionally concerned and grateful that there will be community input moving forward with this project. So I just wanted everybody to know that. And I really appreciate, Scott, you've and the Commissioners and Parks and Rec for, at the last second, really including the neighbors and and doing the right thing. So thank you so much. And Margaret, thank you for your comments on inclusion. I double, I second them.
Thank you, ma'am. Two things. I see two hands left. Let's see, Ms. Potter and then Ms. McCarthy. Again, Ms. McCarthy, I think you know, one of our rules is we let everyone speak once before anyone speaks twice. Now I see Ms. Potter's hand is down. Since there's no other hands, we'll proceed to Ms. McCarthy. You recognize, ma'am?
Hi, I apologize. I didn't mean to lower my hand last time. Colleen McCarthy, Town Meeting, Precinct Four. I currently live on Gulliver Street. My backyard actually is the lower field. I would strongly suggest, recommend that if we could consider as part of the plans, when we looked a bit out, that lower Donovan Field. The reason I bring that up is that field is pretty much unplayable, too. Again, that abuts the field that we're looking to turf. And as a neighbor whose children, you know, first of all, I think Milton National Little League uses that field. About 500 children reap the benefits of having access to some of those fields. And I'll be honest, as a parent of a child who plays Little League, Donovan is often unplayable and quite dangerous, to be quite frank with you. And a lot of times, parents are out there, which is fine. We get out there and we clean it up, but I do ask that that is considered because that field is on a slope and it will slope down to Donovan, so any work runoff will impact that field. And secondly, just to talk about access for our children, that is a field that kids go down, they play pickup baseball in the neighborhood, boys, girls. And I know I speak for Gulliver Wendell and Elman I say that, but I do ask that that is considered or at least part of, you know, part of the conversation when we look to put that out to bid, and we consider that as a town. So, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. With that, I see just one hand raised. Ms. Rowick, you're recognized.
Thank you, Ms. Moderator. Shawna Warwick, Precinct Eight, School Building Committee Chair. I just wanted to touch on a couple of things. Obviously, the field in its current condition is set for numbers of injuries. I played semi-professional football for about 11 years and seen what happens on fields like this. Specifically, that was in the presentation, that was a part of, for the design of this. They have a shock-absorbing layer that's under the turf that helps with concussions. That wasn't unseated tonight. The other portion, as Mr. McKay brought up, is the drainage. The drainage system on this works is what the designer calls a vertical drainage system. So as water penetrates onto the field, the field basically captures it and recharges it into the ground that's there and doesn't run it off into the brook. It's only above a 25-year storm that the physical drain pipes that are under the field would be activated and then drain off into the brook. Those are just a couple of the things that did come up on the call that I was on that I just wanted to share with the other town meeting members. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rowick. Okay, I see no other hands raised. So before we go to the vote, one thing, just on the consent agenda, although I had mentioned that it was 100% vote, I did want to declare it was a two-thirds vote to satisfy the requirements of our precise town clerk and our records. So thank you, ma'am, for pointing that out. With that, if we could put up the poll, by the way, this requires a two-thirds vote. So just, pardon me, the clerk has a question. Let me just step aside. So folks, there's one bit of business I need to go back and just confirm. So if we could pause your thinking for a moment on this Article Four. And I'm going to read an item here and ask if a member would move the article and second it. The motion is, on matters requiring a two-thirds vote by statute, account need not be taken unless the vote so declared is immediately questioned by seven or more voters as provided in General Laws, Chapter 39 and Chapter 15. And certain matters coming before a town meeting require a two-thirds vote. In accordance with Chapter 448 of the Acts of 1996, I will entertain the following procedural motion, which allows the moderator to declare a two-thirds majority vote has occurred. Does anyone, I see Mr. Walsh is so moved. Is there a second? I think I saw Ms. Agostino is seconded. I would assume there's no discussion on this. We'll proceed to a vote on this motion of my declaring a two-thirds vote. All in, so if we could put up the poll. All in favor of the motion to declare the two-thirds vote before the body, please signify by voting yes. All opposed, please vote no. All abstaining, please vote abstain. If we could unmute the phones. On the phones, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Thank you, we can mute. I think I see the votes. We can close the poll. So some votes coming in, okay. Okay. The vote passes with 227 yeses at 98%, two nos at 1%, and two abstains at 1%. So thank you. So now we'll return back to Article Four, and a reminder, this is I now see I have one last hand on Article Four. So with that, recognize Mr. Thomas Curran on Article Four. Sir, you're recognized. You can unmute. Mr. Curran? Apparently not.
No, I'm sorry about that. That was my error. Sorry.
Okay, no raised hand?
No.
All right, thank you. Then with that, if we can put up the poll on Article Four. Sorry, we completed Article Four, right? Yes. And we voted that and declared a two-thirds vote. Very good. All right, with that, according to our consent agenda, we'll now skip to Article 10. Did I declare?
No. We voted on the
We voted on that one? My mistake. Okay, let's go put the poll up now for Article Four. Thank you. And if we could unmute the phones for Article Four? Are the phones unmuted? Okay, thank you. All in favor of Article Four on the phone, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Thank you, we can mute the phones. Looks like the votes are in. We can close the poll. The motion carries with 226 yeses at 97%, seven nos at 3%, and zero abstains. So I declare a two-thirds vote on Article Four. Also, given the motion we just had, I'll go back and re-declare that we did have a two-thirds vote on the consent agenda. Now, with that, we'll go to Article 10, which you should find on page 15. Pardon me? Pardon me, are you right? Pardon me, Article Eight. A lot of papers going on here. Article six, seven, eight. Very good. Recommended that the town vote pursuant to the provisions of General Law 32103J, I'll explain in a minute, to approve the acceptance by the Milton Retirement Board of an increase of $3,000 in the maximum base amount on which the cost of living adjustment is calculated for pension payments, which would increase such base amount from $15,000 to a base amount of $18,000 as of July 1, 2022, and which, once accepted, may not be revoked or take any action relative thereto. With this, I'd like to recognize Mr. George Asher of the Warrant Committee, just to explain the substitution of 103J. Mr. Asher, you're recognized.
Mr. Moderator, George Asher, Chair Warrant Committee, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Six. It was a typographical error that was injected into this by accident. It should be, should have been Article J of the General Laws, Chapter 32, Subsection 103, rather than Article I. The town meeting, the Warrant Committee voted to correct that in the text at our meeting just prior to the town meeting. So the recommendation stands.
Thank you. So it's been, the recommendation on the floor was approved by the Warrant Committee at an earlier meeting tonight. Does anyone wish to speak to this recommendation? Okay, seeing none, we'll proceed to the vote. If we could put up the poll? Yep. Just make sure we'll move our panelists around, okay? All those in favor of the yes?
Aye.
Okay, yes, all those in favor of the motion on the phone, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, no?
No.
Thank you. Okay, I think we can close the poll. With that, I declare 205 votes at 93% yes, and we had, I heard 13 votes at 5% no and five abstentions at 2%. So the motion carries on Article Eight. With that, we will go to Article 10, which you should find on page 15 in your warrant. This is a fairly straightforward article. So recommended that the town vote to amend Chapter 13 of the general bylaws known as the Personal Admin Bylaw, exactly as set forth in this schedule, and to appropriate the sum of $39,986 to fund wage adjustments effective July 1, 2022, said some to be added to the salary accounts of the departments as shown in the following tabulations. And I'll just summarize total Chapter 13 wage adjustments, $39,986, and that's meatset appropriation, the sum of $39,986 be raised from the tax levy. Does anyone wish to speak to this article? I see one hand. That hand is down. Anyone wish to speak to Article 10? And I see Ms. Felton, the one hand. You're recognized, ma'am.
Mr. Moderator, Deborah Felton, Precinct Two, Town Meeting Member. In reviewing Article 10, specifically Page 18 Cemetery, Page 19 Parks and Page 20 Public Works, I noticed that there are repeats of similar classifications, such as senior working foreman on each of these departments. And there are other jobs that are listed that are on each, the cemetery, the parks, and the public works. So I brought to mind the Town Government Study Committee Report of 2016, where the committee recommended that the DPW Cemetery and Park Department come together and cooperate in a possible consolidation. And since the town of Milton is always looking for funds, I thought that I would bring this up to find out what happened to that recommendation from the Town Government Study Committee. And that's, I found on the town website, the annual report 2016 where that's mentioned.
Okay, so is the specific question, were the recommendations of the Town Government Study Committee implemented or or you're looking for a reason for these?
Well, no, I know that they were not implemented. And I would like to encourage the Select Board to bring these three departments together to it's always good to continue to have a conversation about this, to see if there's ways for economy, scales, and efficiency. So any way that the town can find extra funds is always helpful. Funds, I
Okay. That's very clear. Thank you. Mr. Doyle, perhaps you might respond briefly?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. May I ask that Mr. Zulus of the Select Board respond?
Yes, please. Mr. Zulus, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Can you hear me now?
Yes, I can.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mike Zulus, Precinct Three, Town Meeting Member, Member of the Select Board. A few years ago, there was a group known as the Town School Consolidation Committee, and we reviewed the possibility and we reviewed the possibility of consolidating the operations, or consolidating certain operations of the cemetery, the parks, um, and public works. Uh, at that time, we were unable to achieve it. Uh, there was considerable work done by the then-town administrator Anne Marie Fagan to try to, uh, develop a plan for that. But at that time, uh, it's fair, I think it's fair to say the political environment was such, uh, among the, those departments, that, uh, that it was not going to happen. But it seems to me that, uh, that might be something that we consider going forward. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Felton, your hand is still up. Do you have a follow-up?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I see three hands, uh, Mr. Neely, Mr. Walker, and Mr. Matthews. Mr. Neely, you're recognized. If the Select Board could mute, there we go. Mr. Neely?
Town Meeting Member, Precinct Three, and former chairman of the Town Government Study Committee. And, uh, member Felton is correct that the Town Government Study Committee looked at the opportunities for synergies between those three department, among those three departments, and particularly between the park and the DPW. And the way we recommended it was that we expected that the Board of Select Board and the Park Commission would get together and review the overlaps that exist and the opportunities for a statement of work that could be generated, for example, in the winter, in the off-season, uh, where potentially park employees could assist the DPW as to a statement of work. Uh, we've recommended that the Park Board, as I say, and Select Board get together. I don't think that has really been achieved, and it would take a group meeting, have the eight of them get together. But certainly, uh, the opportunity is there for efficiencies. I'm not sure how much cost savings there would be, but there is certainly something that should be considered as the board gets together in the next season here. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, next I see, uh, Mr. Walker. Sir, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Leroy Walker, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Ten, and former member of the Town Government Study Committee. Just to elaborate, uh, just a bit more on what, uh, Mr. Neely just said, some of the other opportunities we thought, uh, could possibly be achieved were, uh, since the DPW was, was in the process of building, uh, or re-renovating their major uh, facility, that some of the staging that was done, uh, at the cemetery, that perhaps that, that could be combined, that there could be some synergies between some of the work that was being done at the cemetery and some of the, uh, work that was being done by Public Works. There were some duplicative classifications. Uh, there could have been, there could be some opportunity for equipment sharing, and certainly, uh, there were some opportunities where if there was downtime, uh, in one of those areas, uh, perhaps the cemetery, that, uh, those individuals could be utilized by Public Works. So there, we thought there were some significant opportunities, as Mr. Neely said, not necessarily for cost savings, but for efficiencies and productivity improvements. So that's that. Uh, my question on the, um, the chart is that where the normal wo- work weeks are shown, is there a reason why certain positions, uh, don't show any normal work weeks, such as the Operations Manager in Consolidated Facilities, Assistant Town Administrator and Human Resource Director in the Select Board? That's one question. And the second question is, uh, in the instances that the Fire Department, where there are forty-two hour work weeks, uh, is that a forty-two hour straight time work week, or is it a forty-hour work week with two hours of overtime built in? Thank you.
Understood. I think I will go to, uh, Mr. Doyle. Can you shed some light on that question?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. At this time, we ask that, um, you, you recognize, um, Milton's Assistant Town Administrator and Director of Personnel, Paige Appolito.
Thank you, uh, Ms. Appolito, you're recognized.
Oh, yes, thank you. Paige Appolito, Assistant TA, uh, Human Resource Director. The Fire Department works forty-two hours. Yeah, that's their regular schedule, straight. It's not forty plus two overtime. Um, and as far as listing hours, um, I think that most of the director positions are vacant, uh, don't have specific hours, just because they probably do work more than thirty-seven and a half hours. And was there one more question?
I think those are the two.
Okay.
Why do some of them have no hours listed? And for fire, was that forty-two straight time or overtime? And you answered, I think.
Yes.
Well, so just one follow-up.
Yes, sir.
In for salary positions or, um, exempt positions, exempt from the Fair Labor Standards Act, it is assumed that those individuals will put in whatever hours are required, but that doesn't mean they don't have a normal thirty-seven and a half or forty-hour work week. So I'm, I'm just unclear as to why that wouldn't be listed, either thirty-seven and a half or forty, understanding that those exempt employees might, uh, from time to time, work more than that.
Ms. Appolito?
Yes, um, it's, yeah, I, I hate to say that that's just the way it's always been listed, but we can always put the thirty-seven and a half hours. Um, I'd say all of them except for police and fire would be the thirty-seven and a half hours.
Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Um, I see two hands, uh, Mr. Matthews and Mr. Dennehy. Uh, Scott Matthews, you're recognized. You're a little faint.
Oh, sorry. Uh, Scott Math- Scott Matthews, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Ten. My question was actually pretty much piggyback of the previous speakers. Um, I was I saw under youth coordinator, there was no hours there. I know that, I was wondering if one, that's related to that coordinated for the Wildcat Den, that position that's been open and unfilled for a while? And what was the significance of not showing hours there? I, I was just a little afraid that meant that, um, filling that position, or funding of that position be prioritized? Especially since, you know, providing a space for the youth is part of the master plan, and, you know, since the pandemic slightly lifted, um, that, that hasn't, that position hadn't been filled.
I'm just looking, which page is that specifically, Mr. Matthews?
I'm sorry, page eighteen, pretty much right below center. Youth Coordinator.
Page eighteen, Youth Coordinator. Right below center, I see. Okay, I, I see subsection Youth and Coordinator below that. Very good. Um, Mr. Duff, okay with you, um, Ms. Uh, Appolito, can you respond to?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. That, that one is not the, um, Parks, um, position. That is an unfunded position that I believe was originally the Police Department. The other, the Parks one is still available, actually, and that, um, after-school program hasn't been open this year due to COVID, but hoping to open it again in September.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews. Um, I see, uh, Mr. Dennehy. Mr. Dennehy, uh, you're recognized.
Can you hear me, Mr. Moderator?
Uh, yes, sir.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Ratama- Mr. Moderator, Mike Dennehy, uh, Precinct Eight, Town Meeting Member, former town administrator. Uh, to go back to Ms., uh, Felton's, uh, question earlier about consolidation, that, excuse me, there was a lot of work done by the Town Government Study Committee. Uh, when I came in in November of two thousand sixteen, we took a very informal look at that. Um, what we did was we moved operations, so we took the Consolidated Facilities Group that was situated, uh, where the accounting office now is, and we moved them down to, uh, Randolph Avenue. That became our operations headquarters, uh, and, and I can, uh, attest that in my five years there, there has never been better coordination between, uh, Director Ritchie, Director Berkeley, uh, Parks, uh, Manager Kevin Crissom, and Superintendent, uh, Desmond, and, and later Ahern with respect to coordinated efforts in town. Uh, we did take some time to try to eliminate some of the redundancies, uh, and improve the efficiencies, and I think if you take a look at, uh, a lot of the events that take place in town now, whether it's snow plowing events or coordinated parades or, uh, events like that took place a week ago, Monday with the Memorial Day event, it is a, it is all hands on deck. Um, and I think the taxpayers should know that that is, um, we did take a look at it. We tried to improve, uh, efficiencies, uh, operationally. There were, there was some transitions that also took place. We were in the middle of hiring a new DPW Director, uh, and then, uh, hiring a new Parks Manager, and subsequently hiring a, uh, Cemetery Superintendent. So there was some transition, but I think a- all in all, uh, in my twenty-seven years of operation, the work that's done, uh, the coordinated work that's done by this group, um, is not necessarily a consolidation, but it, it, it's a very efficient operation, that continues to improve.
Uh, thank you, sir. I see no other hands, uh, raised, so with that, we'll proceed to the vote. If we could put up, uh, the polling question. All those in favor of the motion before the body, please signify by voting yes. All opposed, please vote no. All abstaining, please vote abstain. If we could unmute the phones. Just give me a nod when they're done. On the phones, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no?
No.
Thank you. We can mute the phones. Okay, I think we have the votes in. With that, uh, the results are two hundred and sixteen yes at ninety-seven percent, um, eight no at three percent, and zero abstains at zero percent. Um, with that, we will proceed now to Article Ten, eleven, eleven. Find my page, yes, Article Eleven. Um, I'll just, uh, summarize, uh, recommended that the town appropriate the amount shown in the following tabulation under the heading Recommended FY twenty-three. Inspection services total, six hundred and twenty-one thousand four twenty-one. Total fire, six million one hundred and fourteen thousand six thirty-four. Total Milton Emergency Management, ten thousand nine thirty-five. Total police, eight million one hundred and forty-seven thousand six hundred and seventy-five. Total public safety, fourteen million eight hundred and ninety-four thousand six sixty-five. And that to meet set appropriations for lease law enforcement, the sum of five thousand dollars be transferred from the dog licenses surcharge account received pursuant to Chapter one eighty-seven of the Acts of nineteen eighty-one, and that fourteen million eight hundred and twenty-nine thousand six hundred and sixty-five dollars be raised from the tax levy, and sixty thousand dollars be appropriated from funds certified by the Department of Revenue as free cash. Um, anyone wish to speak to this article? I see one hand. Um, I see a couple, so we'll start with Ms. Felton, Mr. Walker, Mr. Neely, Ms. Felton.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Deborah Felton, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Two. So I just, I have tremendous respect from the Fire Department, for the Fire Department and the Police Department, and we work very closely with them in my position at Fuller Village. However, I do, um, I am looking at the overtime budgets, and, um, I have a question of whether there's ever been any analysis of this overtime budget, and whether it makes more sense to hire more staff than to pay a half a million dollars for, um, the proposed budget for the Fire Department is almost a half a million dollars, and could, uh, raise, because they could go back to the Reserve Fund to ask for additional monies over the year. Um, and the Police Department is almost up to a half a million dollars. So that's a lot of money. That's a million dollars just in overtime, and, um, wondering, um, has there any, have been any studies to try to change that in any way? Thank you.
Understood. Um, Mr. Doyle, might you be able to point us in the right direction? Mr. Doyle, you there?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, this is certainly something that warrants, um, evaluation and study. In the meantime, um, could you please recognize former Police Chief, Select Board Member, Richard Wells?
Yes, sir. Mr. Wells, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Just when I thought I was done for the night. Um, thank you, Mr. Chair. So to Ms. Felden's, uh, Mrs. Felden, uh, my God. Felton's, uh, question. The overtime has been looked at for years. If you were to, one of the things on both departments, you staff up and staff down as situations arise. If you would have increased the staff permanently, now you're talking not just the overtime, you're talking salaries, wages, steps, insurance, pension, and the cost for full-time employees is much higher than just funding it with overtime. As most people who live in this town know, we have a wonderful quality of life, but there are instances where, you know, the pressure of crime, or the pressure of a critical incident, or the pressure of a disaster, um, can bear pretty heavy on us, and in those cases, um, it is much, really much more feasible for us to do it to overtime. And or just from the Police Department, if you go back, there was a very comprehensive study done of the entire department in nineteen ninety-three. orchestrated on a former town administrator, John Cronin, Select Board Chairman, Albert Gordon, and in that, if you read that reported, it articulates basically the same thing, then, that it's cheaper to use overtime than it is to hire additional staff. So I know it seems like a lot of money, but it's, it's, we all have a one, a wonderful quality of life here. The staffs of both departments work really hard to, uh, meet all the needs on a daily basis, and unfortunately, funding overtime on a daily, on a daily, uh, by need basis is fiscal feasibly way to do it. I hope that answers your question.
Ms. Felton, I see your hand is still up. Any follow-up? If we can make sure we unmute, uh, Ms. Felton, just in case her hand's still up.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Um, that, that was twenty-nine years ago that that study was done, and I do not dispute the excellent quality of police and fire. Um, but it seems at least worth taking a look at it. I don't know if Mass Municipal has looked at this issue, what other cities and towns do, but, um, it seems, it's always good to take a fresh look at thing af- things after years go by, and so I would just respectfully ask that that be done. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, sir.
Do, just as a final follow-up to that, overtime and, and operational costs are an annual discussion by the Public Safety Subcommittee of the Warrant Committee every single year, as well as the members of this board when they present their, um, budgets to us and the town administrator.
Thank you. Um, I see, uh, Mr. Asher, of the Warrant Committee. I see your hand raised. We can recognize Mr. Asher.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, George Asher, Chair Warrant Committee, uh, Precinct Six. I echo, um, Mr. Wells' uh, comments. As Chair of the Warrant Committee, I know our Subcommittee discusses this every year, and I just want to point out that the overtime budget for the police is less than seven percent. This year, it's six point eight percent. It is averaged consistently under seven percent for the last several years, certainly as long as I have been Chair of the Warrant Committee. This has been a subject of discussion. The analysis is performed. We are satisfied that Chief King has done a superb job of managing, particularly through COVID, when there was illness and absence and retirements, uh, and an inability to fill positions as quickly as he would have liked. Uh, so, uh, from our perspective, uh, any comparison to other towns where oftentimes overtime can range over ten to twelve percent. Uh, as a cursory look, it's not been a disciplined analysis, but just as a comparative, we have seen from time to time what other towns overtime is comparable towns, and Milton does extremely well. So, uh, the member's concern, though well-placed, is, um, something that has been addressed, and at six point eight percent this year, I think it's something we can be satisfied knowing that a fully-staffed Police Department would, as, uh, former Chief Wells and us, uh, has indicated, be significantly more expensive than what we are paying right now.
Thank you, sir. Uh, I see three hands. Uh, by the way, um, just something I'm going to remind the members. One of the best practices I, I try to remind the members about, uh, um, each town meeting is, uh, to try to refer to the members without, uh, their personal name. Uh, when things are complimentary, it's, uh, all sweetness and light, but sometimes members can get in the heat of the moment, and things can be taken the wrong way, so we could refer to the prior speaker, or the presenter, or uh, the member who just raised this point. I think it helps, uh, um, ensure civility as we go through town meetings. So with that, I see Mr. Walker, Mr. Neely, and, uh, Ms. O'Doherty. Mr. Walker, you're recognized. Mr. Walker? Can we make sure Mr. Walker's unmuted? There we go.
Okay, technical difficulties. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
You got you now.
Okay. Leroy Walker, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 10. I wanted to hearken back to the comment that Dr. Asher made in his presentation, which is that the public safety budgets are essentially flat, which should be, I think, a concern for all of us. But I do have a couple of questions, and I'd like to hear directly from the department heads themselves. Specifically, the questions are, with both firefighters and patrol officers, are all budgeted positions filled or are there vacant positions? And if so, what would be the plan for filling those positions as quickly as possible? And then the second question does relate to overtime, and sometimes it is cheaper to use overtime. Other times, it isn't. In the case of the Fire Department, the actual fiscal 21 expenditures were about 42% higher than what the appropriation is for fiscal 22 and recommended for fiscal 23. So the question for the chief there is, is it likely that we'll be able to stay within that appropriation? And in fiscal 21, what was the reason for such a significant additional expenditure there? Thank you.
Understood. Mr. Doyle, do we have some of the department heads here tonight?
We do, and I thank the former Speaker, Mr. Moderator, for raising the possibility of this speaking, as it was the direction in which we were about to go. So Chief King and Chief Madden are available, and we ask that they be recognized, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. I guess I'll go in order of the warrant. Chief Madden, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. To answer the previous Speaker's comments, all positions are currently filled in the Fire Department right now. We do have an anticipated retirement coming up in January, so we're going to start that process to fill that now. It's about a, the Fire Academies are filling out till the January class, December-January class. So if I hire in the next month, once that member retires, we'll be able to place that person in a Fire Academy, hopefully in the February-March area, to fill that immediately. As far as the overtime from fiscal year 21, so we had, with the, due to COVID, we had five members retire relatively quickly, right after the start of COVID and the rest of that fiscal year, we had several members retire. So again, with that eight, 10-month timeframe to fill the Fire Academy, we had to fill with overtime. We do have minimum manning staffing or minimum staffing per shift. So we needed to keep that rather than shut down an engine or anything like that. We used the extra money that we had in the budget to fill that overtime. I hope that answers the question.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. Very good, Chief King. You're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Short King, Police Chief. In terms of positions, I have seven current vacancies. Of the seven, six have been replacements, have been hired, they were awaited July 25th Police Academy. And the seventh one position opened after they were hired. So I technically have seven now, six slated for late July Academy. I anticipate another one in the fall, so the one extra plus one in the fall will probably result in two others going to a Police Academy sometime in September, October.
And Chief, you're funded for all seven?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Thank you, Chief King. With that, we'll go to Ms. O'Doherty, who I think will be the last speaker. Ms. O'Doherty, you're recognized.
Oh, hi. Can you hear me?
Yes, again.
Hi, Precinct 8. This is my first time on town meeting, so.
Could you state your full name? You would?
Mary Jane O'Doherty, Precinct 8. My question was, I just want to say thank you to the Police and Fire Departments of Milton. They do an extraordinary job and they all work very hard, whether they're on straight shifts or overtime. My question was, how much of the overtime is forced overtime because of lack of positions and needing more positions to be filled currently or over the current amount of positions that are already available? Just wondering how many force shifts are happening in Milton?
Police, Fire, or both?
Both, I'm both.
Both. Okay, I guess we'll go back to Chief Madden. If you have that question, you can answer for us.
Yes, Chief Madden. The Fire Department, this year is the first year we ever really experienced forcing any overtime on anybody. Typically, we do have a certain amount of members that will take overtime when it comes to them. But this is the probably, since I would have to say due to COVID, where, you know, the members just, you know, they were forced to take the overtime to cover the shift. So doesn't happen that often, but it does happen from time to time.
Okay, thank you.
And Chief King, same question?
We're kind of the opposite. Forced overtime's pretty common. People pretty frequently get forced against their will, and there's a lot of reasons for that. Some are just, you know, this other opportunities to work, meaning the private details and stuff. Some of it's just the way kind of the shift scheduling goes. Some of it, I think, is generational, that people just don't want to work the overtime, stuff like that. So there's a lot of variables, but it's pretty common here. We force people quite frequently.
Okay, and do you think that if you had more positions filled, that that would be less? Or do you think it would continue that way?
That's hard to predict. Like in terms of the generational aspect, I think, then I don't think that would change. I think kind of same habits. They like their time off. They don't want to work. It's kind of the same offices who usually take it voluntarily, and some don't take any extra voluntarily. So in some ways, it may help, but in other sense, I don't think it would solve the problem.
I understand. That's why you need that overtime budget.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Chief Madden, I still see your hand up. Did we, did you have any other points to raise? Or if not, if you could lower your hand?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, I did have one point. The, in the comment section on this, it says the Fire Department budget includes funding for a fire prevention and training position. We did not get that in this budget. We've basically been level funded for, since, from last year. So that is not part of this budget.
Okay, thank you, sir. With that, I see there was a hand that has dropped. I see no other hands being raised unless Ms. O'Doherty's done. Mr. Walker, your hand is back. Mr. Walker?
Just, just one more point quickly on that last comment. I don't understand what the chief just said. I heard what he said, but the comments in the warrants say that a position was funded, and he's saying he doesn't have the position. So I don't understand what that means.
Chief Madden, could you elaborate?
Yes. So when I presented the budget to the town administrator and the Warrant Committee, one of the positions I was looking to add to the department was a position that was approved from, I believe, 2016, but never funded. So looking for that funding with the 40B, that's coming up, all those, these projects in town, and, you know, the Fire Prevention Officer with all these inspections that he's doing, it's become quite apparent that he needed some help. And that's one of the things that we were looking to do is to add a position that would be a part-time training officer and a part-time fire prevention officer to help out, lighten the load on the fire prevention side, you know, monitoring these new buildings that are coming up and making sure that they all meet the code. Meanwhile, still making sure that all existing buildings meet the fire code. And then we do not have a full-time training officer, so that position would kind of act as a dual role. So I know that it was one of the things that I had put into the budget, but it never, never made it through all the way through. So it's something that, you know, we'll level funded with the exception of, I think, $20,000 for equipment. So I just wanted to make sure that, you know, that it was noted that we did not get that position.
Thank you. It sounds like a necessary position. Mr. Moderator, can we hear from the, either the Warrant Committee or the Select Board or the Chair of the Finance Committee of the Select Board, get some clarity?
Yes, I think I'll start with Mr. Asher of the Warrant Committee. Mr. Asher, could you address this question?
The best I can answer is that as we go through the drafting, it is not always evident what does and doesn't make it through. The comment was drafted, I think, in good faith with the expectation that the position was going to be included, where the impression was that it was going to be included, that it might not have been included. Could have been a communication issue between the time when the decision was made not to add that position and the time the comment was drafted. So I apologize for confusion on that score.
So, Mr. Asher, does the Fire Department have the funding or not?
If the chief says he doesn't have it, I will listen to the chief.
Well, then where did the funding go?
That, that's up, we looked at a direct number. The direct number, which you see in the warrant, includes the requests that were made. I can't tell you what happened to that $40,000, that $40,000, because, as I say, I was not part of the discussion when the position was not included.
So perhaps I'll go back to Chief Madden. I see your hand raised.
Yes, Mr. Moderator, I do believe that that was put in error or left in there in error. Having the conversations with the town administrator, I was readily aware that we were not going to be able to fund that budget, that item this year. So that's something I just wanted to make sure that it wasn't included. Everyone knew that it wasn't included this year, so then when we return next year, that we're going to try and add that position again next year.
Okay, thank you, Chief Madden. What was just pointed out to me is you, members, you should have received from the town clerk, Susan Galvin, an updated comment for Article 11. The recommendation was left alone, but the comment was changed. Chief Madden would not have received that comment. He was probably looking at his warrant and reading that statement. And the statement was one rev out of date. So, Mr. Walker, it sounds like the Warrant Committee did not receive that request, and so they've updated the comment to reflect that reality. With that, I see two new hands, and then Ms. O'Doherty, again, we'll go to Mr. Coyle, and then Ms. Agostino. Mr. Coyle, you're recognized.
Yes, Jim Coyle, Precinct 7. With the upcoming five and six-story buildings, possibly in East Milton, you know, that's just the start. I mean, my concern is during the discussions with Chief Madden, with the various different boards there, there was concerns raised about staffing for high-rise buildings. The nature of what's happening is changing, and especially with projects coming along in East Milton. And the, the question I have is about what is the plan going forward to deal with the needs that were identified in front of the Board of Appeals, for example, on the East Milton project? Yeah, the, I had one suggestion I made, I guess that's going to have to come at a later time, is I think the, some towns are increasing their permitting fees for project over certain value to help defray some of the costs, not only for fire support, but for inspectional services. And I'd like to see some of that considered here. Plus, I had a little discussion with Chief Madden earlier today on email about NFPA requirements for staffing for, for each fire truck, let's say. And Milton, she pointed out to me that we're only, we're at staffed, I think, correct if I'm wrong, there's three firefighters per vehicle or per fire truck. The NFPA standard or recommendation is four. And, you know, the, the comments that the public heard on these meetings, it's going to be difficult to live up to those requirements. So I'm concerned about in the long run here that the need for firefighters is going to increase rapidly, you know, in the town here. And it should be part of the plan. So I guess why I left it, I was going to get back to Chair Doyle of the Select Board and follow up on those issues I brought up earlier today. But I think it's important to have that in the planning, if not for this, for year 23, at least for '24 and '25, so that it's in the thinking, and as the nature of firefighting changes, you know, that's, the thinking is different. So Chief Madden, if I said anything wrong there, please correct me. But I, that's the gist of what I see of the need that needs to be in the planning.
So, Mr. Coyle, are you making a statement and an intent to follow up versus a question for tonight?
Yes, I, I think I was going to try and make a proposal, but I think I deferred that. I will meet with or discuss it with Chair Doyle of the Select Board to figure out what the next steps might be.
All right. Thank you, sir. Then I see just one last hand raised. That would be Ms. Agostino. Ma'am, you're recognized.
Just an FYI, the unmute pops up and then it disappears. Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Diana Tulio Agostino, Precinct 9. One point of order, and it seems to have happened quite a bit during this article, is that all questions go through the moderator, and there was quite a bit of back and forth with multiple town meeting members asking repeat question, not repeat questions, but follow-up questions, which even those need to be guided through you to who they go to, just as a point of order. But with regards to this budget, if you look at the budget from two years ago, and this was raised right at the beginning, I forget who brought up the point. Two years ago, a small increase here of about $450,000, $460,000. Every day on Randolph Ave, there is major accidents. People are being disabled. Some have, quite a few have died. Unfortunately, my neighborhood is landlocked, and that's why we thankfully had the traffic, the heads of all these departments come and meet with us in the neighborhood. They did what they could do for the town of Milton, but we began the meeting discussing the need for an override in the near future, for next year. And if I could double this overtime to save one person the hardship of becoming disabled in a car crash, I would easily vote it. And secondly, I do know that, I'm glad that Chief Madden and Chief King both relayed to everyone in town meeting how many people they do currently have, how many are in training, how many are moving in to the position come July 1st or the end of July. I really wonder how many town meeting members are aware of the number of over, drug overdoses, the number of suicide attempts in the town, in addition to the car accidents, in addition to all the emergency calls. I cannot commend the Chiefs and the head of the DPW as well, because he now heads the Traffic Commission, for taking such a small increase. And I believe it's the last sentence in the comment or the second to last, that they, the Warrant Committee believes this meets the needs of the town. And we need to take a real close look at this when we're talking about an override, because right now, it might just be meeting the needs of the town. And so I really can't say enough to thank everyone in these departments for what they do to protect our public safety. Because without public safety, what good are the schools? What good is the, you know, the parks and the recreation? What good is anything without public safety first? I think it's the Marines who say, "Safety first." So thank you all.
Thank you, ma'am, for your comments. With that, I see no other hands raised. And so we can proceed to the vote. And so we can proceed to the vote. If we can put up the poll. All those in favor of the motion before the body, please signify by voting yes. All opposed, please vote no. All abstaining, please vote abstained. If we could unmute the phones. On the phones, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, no.
No.
Thank you. We can mute the phones. I think our votes have stabilized. We can, a couple more coming in, okay? Can we close the poll? Very good. The motion carries with two hundred and ten yes votes at ninety-five percent, eleven no votes at four percent, and two abstains at one percent. So thank you for that. Now we will move on to number twelve, general government appropriation. I will summarize this one as well. Recommended that the town appropriate the amount shown in the following tabulation under the heading Recommended Government under the Select Board, accounting four hundred and seventeen thousand, five twenty-five. This is all under the recommended FY twenty-three. Insurance General is one million, one hundred and eighty-six thousand, eighty-one. Law, three hundred and fifty-two thousand, five hundred. Information Technology, six hundred and thirty-eight thousand, sixty-six. Town Reports, twenty-seven thousand, three eighty-nine. Select Board, six hundred and seventy-one thousand, forty-two. Total Select Board, three point four million, one eighteen thousand, two hundred and twenty-nine. Board of Assessors, two hundred and fourteen thousand, one hundred and ninety-six. With me, Town Clerk, three hundred and fifty-eight thousand, five hundred and seventy-eight. Election Registration, two hundred and ninety-two thousand, eight ninety-three. Treasure Collector, four hundred and forty-one thousand, four sixty-four. Total General Government, four million, eight hundred and twenty-five thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars. In that to meet said appropriation, the sum of four million, seven hundred and twenty-four thousand, six hundred and forty dollars be raised from the tax levy, and a hundred thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars be appropriated from funds certified by the Department of Revenue as free cash. Does anyone wish to speak to this article? I see no hands raised. I see one hand raised. Ms. Agostino, you're recognized. We can see you unmuted, ma'am, if you're ready.
Diana Tulio Agostino, Precinct Nine. Our town audit budget is separate from any other department, board, or committee. I'd like to know, first of all, why the town law budget? Can we scroll that down? I, I believe it was a little bit.
On the top of page twenty-four, you want to see the law budget?
Right, right.
Okay.
First of all, I'd like to know why the law budget is within a town budget. I also noticed on the town website that the town council is listed as being under the department versus a separate entity. It's not, neither the firm nor the town council is an employee of the town. It's very similar to what the auditors do. It's a separate entity. That's the first question. The second one is, when was the last time we ever put this out to bid? I believe I asked the Warren Committee that question, because, you know, it's a lot of money and there's, you know, we're not married to one business, the same way even with the auditing group. I know we've had them for years, but I know in the past, sometimes they've reduced their prices. So those are two questions. What does the Warren Committee understand as far as having this, within this budget? I mean, just because it's been there for years doesn't mean it's actually in the correct place. And then when I saw it on the town website as being part of the department, once again, it's not a town employee. It's a separate business. And when the Warren Committee looked at this, how did they compare it to other cities and towns, what they're spending, how they manage it? Do we actually have a contract these days? Because I know for many years, that was one of the questions I had, and we did not have a contract with them. So I appreciate those three questions to the Warren Committee.
Okay, I think I heard the following, is why is the law budget located inside the general government budget?
Correct.
One. Second, when was the last time that the law contract was, or work was put out to bid? Third, what did the Warren Committee learn about comparing our law budget to other towns? And do we have a contract with our firm? Were those the four?
That's correct, and it was only because in the prior discussion with the Audit Committee, you know, the audit company that we use, it's a separate company. So with, I'm comparing it to other ways that we do business.
Understood. Okay. Let's see if we can get some answers. I think I'll start with Mr. Asher of the Warrant Committee. Perhaps you could address the Warrant Committee question.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, George Asher, Chair Warrant Committee, Town, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Six. The Warrant Committee has never addressed exactly why law is placed there. It's simply because it's an expense to the town, and we rely on the audit and the Auditors Committee and the Town Accountant to place what belongs where. Our purview is to look at, actually, your second question more than the first, as to why a budget item and a line item is where it is. It actually made some sense to some of us that it does remain there because it is an expense to the town, just as others are, and paid, just as others are. With regard to how often the contract is offered, I would refer that to the Select Board. The Town Warrant Committee has, on several occasions, suggested that the, like other services for town government, that the law budget and the legal services be put out to bid from time to time as the Select Board finds necessary. What I can say is our research on that showed that, that while it is advisable to look at other firms for municipal services, the actual number of firms who provide them is relatively small and, and very difficult to transfer between one law firm and another, just given the way that business is conducted among the town. With regard to the law budget, the law budget itself in aggregate seems to be at average or slightly lower than, than complementary towns or comparable towns that we have looked at over the years. But with regard to how frequently the town looks at its legal services, while the Warren Committee has made recommendations in the past, that the town government, that the town administration put out to bid or look certainly at alternatives, that's the purview of the Select Board, and I would refer you to them for an answer as to how frequently they do that, why they do not, et cetera, et cetera.
Thank you, sir, for the answer on the other cities and towns, or other towns anyways. I think I'll go to Mr. Doyle of the Select Board. Mr. Doyle, perhaps you could just further confirm why law is in the general government budget and the question on contract and out to bid?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Historically, law has been under the jurisdiction of the Select Board. There is no bid that has been put out in recent memory, but there is an annual engagement letter with the town's law firm.
Is the engagement letter the answer to the contract question?
It would essentially be equivalent to that, yes.
Okay, Ms. Agostino, I think I got replies back. I see you're still here. Any follow up?
No, thank you very much, Mr. Moderator. I'll follow up more during the year. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. I just see one hand. Mr. Paul Vaughn, sir, you're recognized? And Mr. Vaughn, if you could unmute? Mr. Vaughn, if you'd still like to speak, if you could hit the unmute button. There we go.
Okay. With regard to the law.
Mr. Vaughn, could you introduce yourself and precinct, please?
Yes, Paul Vaughn, Precinct Eight, Town Meeting Member.
Thank you.
The, the expenditures of the town towards the law costs are quite, quite high. I would like to know if the school department has their own legal counsel that their budget pays for? And if not, why not?
Okay, so the question is, does this school department have its own legal counsel and budget for it, separate from this budget? Or is this, or is your, also, does this budget cover the schools? That's the implication?
That's correct.
That sounds like it is. Okay. Perhaps I'll go to Ms. Dexter. Are you here to perhaps answer that budget question on the schools?
Yes, I'm here.
If you could introduce yourself?
Hi, I'm Amy Dexter, Assistant Superintendent for Business for Milton Public Schools. The Milton Public Schools budget does have a separate line. Well, it does have a separate amount for law expenses, not separate, it's in the total appropriation. Sorry, I missed it there, but it is accounted for in that budget.
Mr. Vaughn, did that answer your question?
No, it raised, it raised another question for me. If that be so, then why would the town council respond to any court action involving the school department? Wouldn't that be the response of the school department's legal counsel?
Perhaps I'll go to Superintendent Jett, who could shed some light on that. Mr. Jett?
I believe he is not.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So we have Murphy Lemery Murphy that does student discipline. And we also have Joe Emerson that does the labor. So from my understanding, we do not necessarily use the town's council. The town has been advising the school building, so, School Building Committee on legal aspects in regards to securing land in the school building process.
Thank you. So the, the answer is the schools are not using town council as paid for by this law budget and general government, if I understand you correctly.
That's correct, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Vaughn?
I'm not satisfied, but it is what it is. Thank you.
Thank you. I suppose that's the definition of life. So, I do, thank you. I see one last hand, Mr. Robert Powers. If you could unmute yourself, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Robert Powers, Precinct Two. My question comes on election and registration, Section D. Just looking at, you know, there's a, there's a massive increase from twenty-two to twenty-three, and looking at the actuals from fiscal twenty-one presidential election year, I was wondering if you could get some light on, you know, why it's increasing so much? You know, where's that money going?
Understood. Mr. Doyle?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. We would like to ask the moderator to recognize Town Clerk Susan Galvin.
Ms. Galvin? You're invited up to the podium. Well, you're right here, so.
Hi, Susan Galvin, Town Clerk, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Seven. And I believe the question was regarding the increase in elections.
Yes, that's right.
Okay, so the reason for the increase is for each election now we are required to offer early voting, early voting by mail, and that is very expensive. It's labor-intensive and it's just the cost of doing elections now.
Mr. Powers, did that answer your question?
Mr. Moderator, I would ask, I, I know early voting, vote by mail was very prominent in the, the last presidential election, which, you know, on here, it's showing total expenses of a hundred and fifty-two thousand that year. I, I, I'm curious as to why it don't, you know, it's almost doubled for, for the next cycle.
Okay. Ms. Galvin?
So, the money that the federal and state government gave us during that time period to offset it covered about a hundred thousand of it. Those are actual costs of what we spent in twenty-twenty. Does that answer your question?
Mr. Moderator, I guess my other question would be, it's showing, you know, salaries and wages. So are we hiring more employees? Are there benefits associated with those set employees? Are they full-time positions?
Yeah, maybe, Mr. Powers, do you have a full list of questions, or is that your last one?
That's the last one, sir.
Okay, Ms. Galvin, one last time, full-time or?
No, these are seasonal temporary employees, as well as overtime for some of the, the staff that work in my department.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. At this point, I see, I saw a hand, and it's disappeared. So I think with that, we will go to, no, I see all right, there's no other speakers, and Mr. Powers, you have a right to a second slot. Mr. Powers, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I would just, I'd like to offer an amendment, if you, if so, please.
If it's fairly simple, because I don't think I've seen it in writing, but what's your?
Very simple. I'd like to transfer forty thousand from the appropriation for election registration, salaries and wages to the Fire Department to fund the position of fire prevention and training that was requested by the, by the chief.
Okay, so we have, let me get this specifically. From which line item do you want to remove the forty thousand dollars?
Salary and wages, election and registration.
Okay. And you want to transfer that, we'd have to go back to, I think, open that article. I'll just have to check with town council on this, because we've closed that article, but you want to, at this point, reduce salaries and wages for election registration by forty thousand dollars, and I'll come back to you in just a second on the mechanics of transferring that to fire. But I have that correct?
Yes, Mr. Moderator.
Okay, if we can just pause for a minute, I'll be right back. By the way, before I do that, do I see a second in the chat from any members?
Mr. Moderator.
I see a second from Mr. Walker. Okay, with that, I will pause and just be right back. So, Mr. Powers, to accomplish your request. So, Mr. Powers, to accomplish your request, which has been moved and seconded, we'd have to do two things. First, we vote on your motion to amend this Article 12 by reducing the row that says de-election and registration salaries and wages by $40,000. So we vote on that amendment and then we would then vote on this article. And then when that is complete, since we're within an hour of completing our public safety article, we'd have to vote to reconsider that article and that would be subject to a majority vote. Then we'd entertain the motion to increase, I think, assume you're saying fire salaries by $40,000. We would then open up that for reconsideration and vote on that separately. So there's a few steps to accomplish this. I just want to make sure you're clear on all that.
Yes, sir, that's my intent.
Okay. So, and if I just have a question from the clerk, if I could just pause for a minute? Okay, so at this point, we now have a motion to amend Article 12, which is general government by?
Moderator? It's Chief Madden.
Yeah, Chief Madden, if you could hang on for a second?
Can I just, one point of order on this, or I just, I, I want to clarify that this position isn't $40,000. It's, it's, it's $90,000. So it, I, I appreciate that, but it's $40,000.
Okay, folks, we got a lot of voices on the phone. We could just, why don't you let me just get some information here? But, but thank you, Chief. So, Mr. Powers, at the moment, we have a, an article in front of us in order to go reduce this by 40,000. I'm then going to open up, we have an amendment, rather, I'm going to open up the amendment for discussion and that's when we can weigh in on information like the chief is providing. And I know the town clerk wishes to speak, et cetera. So with that, I think what I'll start with is a discussion from the members. We will hear the town clerk weigh in. The first hand I see on the motion to amend this Article 12 is from Mr. Walker. Mr. Walker, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Leroy Walker, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 10. I just wanted to be clear, I seconded this for the purpose of discussion. And I do think it's worthy of discussion and I am willing to work with the previous member. I think I can say Powers since he was the maker of the motion. I'm willing to work with him and others to figure this out. I do not think that the town clerk's budget is the place to, to take the money from. So as you've laid out there, a number of different steps here. And I'm not sure, if you, if you could, Mr. Moderator, just clarify if it's more than an hour after, how is the process different? Because I'm not sure that we're going to able, be able to work this all out tonight. And I would close by saying, if, if it is simply, I, I was the second on this motion, but if it is to move the money from the town clerk's budget, I am not in favor of that. But I am in favor of looking for a way to fund this position in fire. Because as Dr. Asher pointed out, the public safety budgets are flat. And I think that at the very least, this seems like a necessary position that we should work to fund. It appears $90,000 for, from, for, for this position. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Just to answer your question, the process is that within an hour of an article being decided, then town meeting can reconsider it with a majority vote. This is Rule 12 that you should find earlier in your warrant. After an hour, except if this occurs, for example, overnight, it requires a two-thirds vote to reconsider the article. Now, since we're addressing just 12 right now, my intent would be to close out Article 12 and then finish for the night with an adjournment until tomorrow. So we won't get to open up the public safety article tonight, even if his first motion passes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Let's see, the next hand I see is Ms. Agostino, I think you were next, and then I'll go to Mr. Asher. Ms. Agostino?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Diana Tulio Agostino, Precinct 9. I would respectfully request, which I think I can do, respectfully request the proposer of this amendment to withdraw it until a later time, such as looking at the stabilization fund money or the reserve fund money. And the only reason, reason I'm respectfully making this request is to expedite the evening, but also because whether or not we approve that money for the salaries and wages, that money will have to be expended because we're legally obligated to now conduct our elections in the way that the town clerk just told us. So while I strongly support, very strongly, due to information I'm very familiar with in the construction industry of these requirements and the strong need for the 90,000, the 40,000 falls short. So, Mr. Moderator, if maybe you could clarify that the proponent of a amendment could actually withdraw the proposal, if that's correct, I would just like to put that out on the table.
Yes, thank you, ma'am. I actually did research this in town meeting time after a prior town meeting. And it turns out that once it's been made and seconded, a motion cannot be withdrawn. It's now a live motion before the body and town meeting must deal with it. So we have to vote it up or down at this point.
So can I have a follow-up?
Yes, please.
Then my, thank you very much for doing your homework on that, to have such a quick answer right away. So then I would suggest that the proponent and the person who seconded it may themselves possibly speak against the proposal, which might expedite it. Since we don't just need 40,000, we need 90,000. Thank you.
I'll, it's a good idea. I will probably leave that up to them to decide to speak. I do see also Mr. Asher of the Warrant Committee. Your hand is raised, sir?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, George Asher, Chair Warrant Committee, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 6. I know you are going to come to ask the Warrant Committee for our opinion on this. And I can tell you that we took the poll while this discussion was going on. It was unanimous, resounding no, because of several of the reasons that previous speakers have brought up. If we are supportive of finding money for the fire department, but this is not the place to take it out of. Because we're obligated to run fair and honest and open elections. And we can't, we can't reduce this budget anymore. That would leave the process woefully underfunded and open us up to legal issues, I'm sure. So the Warrant Committee is not supportive of this amendment.
You're right, I would have gotten to you, Mr. Asher. By the way, my approach is to deal with all the members. We go to the submitting authorities and the interested town departments, close on the Warrant Committee and then go to the vote in the case of these amendments. So I see Chief Madden's hand is up and also I know Ms. Galvin's hand was up a moment ago. Chief Madden, you're recognized?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, thank you. I, I apologize. I just wanted to make sure that, you know, that, that minor error was, was corrected in, in the warrant. And, you know, I didn't know that the, the warrant that I had had that in there and it was in, you know. So I just wanted to make sure that, you know, when we ask for that position next year, I've worked with, with, with the town, town administrator, Ms. Fagan. You know, we, we have a plan going forward for the next fiscal year and that's something that we're going to work on. So the, the poster, the, the, the person who made the, the motion, I, I appreciate it, but I, I really can't take it from another, another, another department right now. And I, I apologize for this and, you know, I just want to make sure that they know that, you know, we have a plan going forward for the next fiscal year and, and I'd like to stick with that. So thank you.
Thank you, Chief Madden. Madam Clerk, do you have any points to make from your desk or the podium? Thank you.
First of all, I'd like to thank Chief Madden. That was very, very sweet of you. I would like to clarify that if that money is taken away, this is unfunded money. The elections go on regardless, which would mean I would have to go for a reserve fund transfer. These are funds that have to be paid. So, you know, i- if the money is taken from my account or the election's account, it would be paid through, through a reserve fund.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. All right, at this point, I see Mr. Dennehy is the last hand and Mr. Dennehy be recognized. And I think we'll go to a vote. It's getting late. Sir, you're recognized?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mike Dennehy, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 8. Correct me if I'm wrong, Madam Clerk, and you may not have the numbers in front of you, but I believe that early voting was an overwhelming success and very popular to the point where I think one of the precincts in town, one-third of the registered voters used early voting. And to your earlier point, this is an unfunded state mandate. So if, if it's not paid for now, it will have to be paid for later. Thank you.
Ms. Galvin is nodding her head that yes, you are correct. Early voting was very popular. With that, I see no other hands. So, Mr. Walker, you get a second opportunity. You're recognized, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Leroy Walker, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 10. I recommend that the maker of the motion that I seconded revise the motion to say to have town meeting direct the Warrant Committee to provide a recommendation for funding the training position in fire at an amount of $90,000 without affecting any other town budgets. So it could, could be taken from reserve funds or others, but not affecting any town department budgets. That would be my recommendation to the maker of the motion.
Well, at this point, as I mentioned, I appreciate the sentiment. We do have a live motion on the floor of town meeting that's been made and seconded. So what I would, and it gets too complex if we start amending amendments. Again, town meeting time refers to just two things on the floor, the primary and a subsidiary motion, which is where we are now. So with that, I think if another speaker wishes to make that after the conclusion of this amendment, they're free to do so before we go back to looking at the overall article. But I think amending the amendment would be too confusing for members at this point, Mr. Walker.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I see no other hands raised. So we'll go to a vote on amending Article 12 per the town meeting members' request, which would reduce Row D, election and registration, the subsection salaries and wages by $40,000, which would reduce it to The total election and registration would be reduced to 252,893. The total general government and budget would be 4,785,360. That is the motion before us today. It just requires a majority vote. Thank you, Ms. Warrant Committee Clerk, for capturing those numbers. And we'll, if we could put up the poll. All those in favor of the motion before the body, please signify by voting yes. All opposed, vote no. Abstaining, please vote abstain. If we could unmute the phones. On the phones, all in favor, please signify by saying yes. Opposed, no. I hear none. Okay, we can close the phones. And our votes, all in? Still votes coming in? Okay. Okay, we'll close the poll. So the motion fails with a vote of 26 yeses and 12, at 12%, 180 nos at 86% and four abstains at 2%. At this point, we are now returning back to discuss the, the recommendation for Article 12 itself without any amendments. We're back to the way it is printed in your warrant. With that case, I see no other hands. Mr. Walker is your first time speaking on the main article itself, so you're recognized, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Leroy Walker, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 10. I'll, I'll wait until this motion passes. Thank you.
Until the article?
Till the article, till the article passes, right?
Well, what I might encourage is, I think that'll be our last article of the night because we're at 10:45. So this would be a good time to make a goner.
Okay, my, my, my motion is that town meeting ask the Warrant Committee to make a recommendation to fund a fire prevention and training position in the fire department at an amount of $90,000 without affecting any other town budget, but looking at other reserve funds that might be used for that purpose.
Okay, so that's sound, I understand what you're getting at now. That sounds like you want to reopen the public safety budget where we set the fire amount. You're right, that's not appropriate for this article right now. So if you could hold that thought until tomorrow, we'll still be under the majority-only time limit since we will not have crossed a full hour even going overnight. And you can make that first order of business tomorrow. How's that?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. With that, I think I've announced the votes. And let me just make sure I did because I see this in front of me. So just to close out Article 12, that we've, we passed the amendment, any other questions or comments on the article itself? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote on Article 12, on the recommendation for Article 12 that requires a majority vote. We could put up the poll. Mr. Zulus, do you have something urgent? No? Okay, thank you. All those in favor of the motion before the body, please signify by voting yes. All opposed, please vote no. All abstaining, please vote abstain. Please remember to click submit at the end. If we could unmute the phones in case they're still there. On the phones, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. We can mute the phones. Looks like the votes are in. We can close the poll. So the recommendation on Article 12 carries with 197 yes votes at 94%, nine no votes at 4% and three abstentions at 1%. With that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Pardon me? Nope. Yes, Mr. Zulus points out a short order of business, if I could. Article 44 is something that one of the committee members is unable to address on Thursday night, which I think is where we may go. And so, Mr. Zulus has asked if it's possible to entertain a motion to move Article 44 to the date and time certain of 7:30 PM Tuesday, June 6. So if I could. All right, we do have a motion on the floor. So pardon me for a sec, let me just go talk to Mr. Zulus and see if I can help address this concern. Be right back. We can address Mr. Zulus's point tomorrow on Tuesday at 7:30. So I think that means we now have a motion to adjourn. And I see it's been moved and seconded. All in favor, I see the poll is up. No, is it the last poll? So, host, I wonder, can you help pull my poll down on the screen or do I have to do it these times? There we go. Okay, now if you could put the poll up. Okay, we're now voting on the motion to adjourn. All those in favor of the motion to adjourn, please signify by voting yes. All opposed, vote no. All abstaining, please vote abstain. We can open up the phones just in case. No one's on the phone? That's very good. I think we have all the votes in. We can close the poll. Motion to adjourn carries 192 yeses at 99%, one no at 1% and zero abstentions. With that, folks, we'll see you tomorrow night, Tuesday at 7:30, back on Zoom. Thank you very much. Good night.